I will bring us back from our brief recess. And it was timely and it allowed the tech adjustment to our microphone, so we should all be good. With that, we are on item number three, approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes, modifications to, or motions to be made with regards to the agenda? Not seeing any, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it is written.
So moved?
Moved by Ms. Hastings, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Walsh. Is there any discussion? In that case, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The agenda's approved, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number four, which is the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes our regular monthly meeting of November 7th, the Capitol Facilities Meeting of November 2nd, the Special Board Meeting of November 14th, the Communication and Policy Meeting of November 21st, and the Finance Committee Meeting of November 30th. Does anyone have any modifications or any motions to pull any of those minutes out of the consent agenda? Not seeing any, is if someone would make a motion to approve-
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cotten, and seconded by Mr. Weinberg. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That the approval of the consent agenda passes. With that, we will move on to student recognition.
Do you mind if I sit up at the table and invite one of the students up with me?
I don't mind, I don't think anybody else in the board minds, so please feel free.
Eliza, will you join me up here?
I'll remind you, Superintendent, to put the microphone to where we can hear both of you.
If we do that, we do that. Thank you. We want to make sure that it's just students. As part of the agenda tonight, I'd like an opportunity to recognize some Concord High School students, and one of the students is with us tonight. And, you know, it was really important that we take a moment to recognize our students, because every single day, they make a difference in the lives, lives of someone in some way, and I'm going to share Eliza's story in a minute. But, you know, so often, we hear stories about teenagers, you know, that doesn't always shed a positive light. And, but I'm here to tell you a story of, and we have two, I have two, and two young women, and Michael has some other students that he's going to share with you tonight, who have accomplished great deeds. And so, I asked tonight to have Eliza join us, Eliza Johnson, and share her story. She, seeing a crisis on her way to school, right, you were on your way?
I was on the way home.
On the way home, that's even better, probably, right? And she jumped into action to support adults who were trying to assist a dad whose young child was choking. And he had gotten out of the car, stopped in the middle of the road, and Eliza knew that she would be able to assist, and assist those adults in helping that young child and dislodge whatever was caught in his throat. So, I would like the video to tell us what happened, this whole thing. So, behind you on the screen, we have what happened, now remember, our buses have video, that's where we got it. So, you know, we have video cameras on the outside. We also, as you know, we have cameras internal in the bus.
No sound, right?
Huh? There is sound, yeah.
I didn't test that.
Yeah.
Let's see, let's work.
I don't hear it.
It's on, but the volume is very low.
Oh, really?
Yeah. The TV's too low.
Oh, the TV?
Well, pause and then try?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, I didn't test that. You want their amount?
Yeah.
TV's up?
That's my bad. They look, they do? I love it. Yeah.
Top all the way?
They top all the way?
Yeah.
Then we can do a narration, that's tough.
Well, I don't know, there's too much right now. Everybody's on the bus and they're going home. And you will recognize the areas that, in the city, as they go through the streets, bringing youngsters home. You might be able to narrate better than I.
Yeah.
So, maybe you can, it isn't, we're not hearing that. Will you share a little bit of what's happening? Can you do that?
So, what happened was, my bus driver picked up her little walkie-talkie, and she had called for a dispatcher, and she said that there was a baby choking. And as soon as I heard that, because I'm CPR certified, first aid certified, I jumped up and I was like, I, I ran off the bus to go over and help. I did help a little bit, and then after a minute, I think they questioned why they had handed their child off to a high school, because I hadn't said anything, I just kind of went over and tried to help. Another woman came over, I think she was a little bit more experienced than I am, this was my first interaction with a choking child, and he had gone unconscious and was unresponsive. She also had stuck her fingers in to try to dislodge whatever was in there. I did not do that, because I did not want a chance to baby getting sick from whatever was around the school.
Thank you, Eliza, for coming here and sharing that, that story with us. Truly, you know, you're a remarkable young person. You can see from the video, you didn't hesitate a bit. You ran out of that, that school bus to go and help. And as a father, I know the fear and the absolute, how scared that dad was, and you made a huge difference. So, you know, we're all very, very proud that you're one of our Concord students.
And a Broken Ground alumni.
And a Broken Ground alumni. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say? I don't think we could say much more after seeing that than what you just demonstrated, so thank you.
A second student that I wanted to recognize, she's not able to join us yet, so if we could hold off, if she comes in, then I would ask Jim if we could-
Certainly.
-go to her when, if she comes in. If she doesn't, I'm still going to recognize her at some point in the meeting tonight, but I would like to pass the baton to my, to Concord High School.
Thank you. So, this, I assume, is celebrations? And we have Principal Riordan, welcome?
Thank you, everybody. We've had three acts meant to long, students to celebrate tonight. Each one of them created objects of beauty, did things that are difficult, and I think in their own way created our, some traditional points of art, some less so. But I think they're all truly in the nature of art. And I heard someone say once, that, oh, our group higher is courage. And I think all three of these groups exemplify that. So, I want to start with our senior one acts directors. They come up and bring seating, and their director Clint Close.
You're just going to need to talk to the microphone.
Yes, you do.
District musical director.
Good, yeah. I'm really just hearing support of Clint, but, pass that one down. Because I get to support them, I just wanted to talk about a couple of music kids that just need to have their names recognized. In November, I think everyone, well, you all know, but, we had about fifteen or so music kids audition for Allstate, and we had seven of them make it. And so, and actually, one of them had two instruments, so I just wanted to read their names. That's Elliott Brock, Elliott Dater Roberts, Haley Ducharme. She made it on tenor saxophone and viola. Veronica Galderani, Merritt Oxnard, Elliott Pollard, and Ella White. And just, sometimes I feel like I harp on the slow bit too much, but, they only take two tenor saxophone singers, Haley made it on one. With their score, those scores, they also create a chamber music festival, where the kids get to go and do small groups of brass quintet, brass choir. We had seven kids make that. A lot of them came from that same list. So, that, those people are Elliott Brock, Elliott Dater, Haley Ducharme, Lindsay McLaren, she made it on alto saxophone. They take four saxophones in Allstate, she's the fifth one, to make it into the Chamber Orchestra, or Chamber Saxophone Group. Beth Nian on flute, Merritt Oxnard, and Elliott Pollard. And then to add one more, Haley also auditioned for jazz Allstate. They take four saxophones for that, and maybe around tenor sax for jazz Allstate. I just thought you guys should know that we have some great music kids, and just wanted you to know that they're out there. If you would like to hear them, they, we have two concerts next week. We have one on December 12th, which I think they're meeting here on the 12th, but if you could spare some time, the Taplo Center. And then we also have our jazz and chamber concert. We're doing that at the City Auditorium on the 15th. So, you could come and support our music program, that would be awesome. And I'm going to hand it on to Clint and the drama director, to talk about their experience conducting plays.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Thanks. The senior one acts at Concord High School is a time-honored tradition, and it's been going on for a long, long time. And it's an opportunity to talk about the ultimate summative to anything. It's an opportunity for students to gather the knowledge that they've been using for their first three years, and then come to the other side of the creative process and take on directing, and casting, and blocking, and getting everything else done for their productions. And this year's group is no exception. A group of highly talented, highly communicative, and highly collaborative students that were able to put on their own senior one acts this past November, and I'll let them take over and talk all about it.
So, thank you, Mr. Close, and I, there's the microphone that Mr. Cohen was using, and I will ask you to speak into the microphones, because the people who are watching are streaming at home, you know, it's important that they're able to hear it, and that we don't always get it, so don't be shy. Wait a second, what am I talking to this group about being shy for? That is the last thing I need to tell you. So, you know, please, share, go ahead.
Because we'll go with some introductions first, so I'm Christopher Lainey.
I'm Caleb Jackson, and we co-directed the play Crushed by Don Zlitis.
Oh, you won.
Yeah, we're sure.
Yeah, we're sure.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I thought we were going by show. It's fine.
Hi, I'm Kat Marino, and I wrote and directed my show Spooked.
Hello, I'm Gori Dunlap.
And I'm Kyla Artis.
And we co-directed She Kills Monsters.
My name's Ryder Fisk, and I directed It's Not a Murder Mystery.
And Road.
So, we just kind of thought it'd be nice to tell you guys about, like, the process that goes into putting on a play. There's a lot of elements to it. Right now, we'd like to talk about production, so.
Yeah, so, one of the big things you have to do is blocking, telling the actors where to be, when to be there, and how to act while they're there. And conveying that information can be challenging. Sometimes you have to go up and show them what you want, and, but a lot of times, they'll figure out something even better than you had in mind before. It's really a cool process to see them bring the characters to life.
Yeah, and really, really, well, a couple of, like, really important parts with producing a play is, one, just overall making sure that you know what kind of props you need, what kind of set design you want. And especially with senior one acts, that's a lot of, like, collaborating with the other directors, because you're on and off. So, working with them to piece together a coherent set that works across all plays was a big must.
Okay, awesome. Okay, me and Kyla wanted to talk about the meaning of senior one acts. We have both been in all three years of senior one acts. So, you're able to be in, you can act in two out of the four, and I believe most years, we've been in two of them, if not, one together each year. And we decided to put on a show together for our fourth year. And the meaning of senior one acts is to, as much of a great director as Close is, is something very different, to see something that your peers, you know, make. Like, you're with them all four years, and there are things that you learned during senior one acts that you didn't know. I didn't know Ryder could write, and he did a great job. I think everyone here did. And I think that's a very big, important part about senior one acts, is the community that you make during this.
Yeah, like, it was really cool to get the opportunity to take on a leadership role in something that is, like, so important to me, being in theater, and getting to access that creative part of myself was big. And getting to work with my peers and my friends, and get to unlock certain parts of their creativity that I hadn't seen before was very cool.
So, I'm in the CRTC program at Concord High as well. This is my third year. I'm in the tech program now, I was in the acting program for two years. And to be able to take what I've learned in that class, blocking and everything, and to be able to put that into this was super important. But another thing that's great is, you don't really, you don't really need experience. I think this is a great learning experience as well, for those who just want to have fun.
Yeah, so, I think a good thing about senior one acts is it really is just a fun experience. It's a good entry point for a lot of students who come to Concord High with little to no acting experience, just to get, while they're feeding the water, try acting, even if it's their first time. We had a lot of kids, actually, a couple seniors even, who, this was their first performance, which was a really awesome opportunity. So, one of the things we do as directors was cast our shows. And it was unique in the fact where we had to collaborate amongst ourselves on what actors we wanted for specific roles in our shows, and then making all the other shows work as well. So, after auditions, we got together in the green room, Mr. Close's room, and we had an NFL-style draft, it was really fun, choosing what students we wanted to have in our shows, working out the schematics if we were going to have students in one or more shows. It's really fun, there were some balances on if we wanted friends in our shows, if we wanted people who we didn't really know that well. I think we all, one of the cool things about having four different shows with a lot of different directing styles, is you get a lot of different casting styles, too. So, I think personally, what I did was I wanted, I think you can teach anyone how to act, and that's a good thing that you can see in senior one acts with all of our new students. So, building my show, I wanted a group that I knew we would have a good time, we would all get along well, and I think that's what happened. And I'm sure that applies to all you guys as well. But overall, really good experience, and a good example of how you can collaborate and get the job done.
So, for my show, Spooked, I wrote it myself, and this process has been going on for about the past three years. I've been doing senior one acts since my freshman year. And after that first experience, I was hooked, and I knew I just had to write my own show when I got the chance, when I was a senior. And that prep process started long before my senior year. So, during my sophomore and junior year, I was writing my script, and working out all of the details and the kinks of everything that, you know, I was hoping would come to pass one day on the Concord High stage. And I'd say it worked out pretty well. There was a lot of frustrations and challenges in that process as well. Sometimes I would be staring at my computer screen for hours, just trying to come up with a concept for the plot, or a character archetype, or a setting, and I just couldn't quite decide what I needed. And sometimes it would require taking a break, or talking to my family and friends for support. But it was overall a very inspiring and it processed, and it made me grow a lot as a person. Part of the best thing about writing my own show is that, once I cast it, I was able to let these actors shape the show however they wanted, in outgoing actor made like a more enthusiastic character. And there were a couple auditions that I was absolutely in love with, and I wasn't sure where I wanted to place these actors yet, but I claimed them for my show anyways, and I sort of created these parts for them as we went along in rehearsals. And they became like a major part of the show, and it wouldn't work without them. So, it's kind of incredible to be able to see this thing in my head be brought to life, as Caleb put it, on stage, and it was, it was a very rewarding process.
Outstanding. Thank you. I, it's not unusual for senior one acts to be sold out. I know they're always sold out. But I actually happen to know a few seniors this year, and that attended, and said that not only were these amazingly entertaining, but they were extremely creative. You really impressed your peers at the high school, I can tell you that, because I unfortunately didn't get a chance to go see them, but I heard all about them. So, you did a great, great job, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, I was going to say, anybody else have a question or something?
I don't know.
So, I know one of you, oh, thank you, you're in the CRTC Theater Program. I was curious what skills or resources you think the program could use, maybe in the future, that could help maybe in the senior one acts?
All three of us here are in the tech program right now.
We're pretty kitted out.
We do almost everything. Right now, we're working on lighting and sound, which is huge, to know how to do that. In the acting class, I learned how to direct, I learned how to act. We've learned about props, I-
Yeah, I think as far as, like, as far as new gear goes, it's, the industry's constantly changing and updating, and Mr. Close is very good at keeping on the curve there, ahead of the curve, and making sure we all have, so when we, when we get out of college or whatever, we go into a job and like, oh, I know this bloody board, I know this soundboard, I know how to use this, and I can just do it, and that's really important, I think.
And, go ahead, Ms.
Can you just, what's next for all of you, as you finish out your senior years?
So, I'm still trying to figure out what is kind of aft, coming for me, like, after, you know, senior year, plan is. I hope that it's, I choose to continue my career in theater, whether it be on the tech side, directing, acting. It's a really amazing experience, and I just don't think I could let it go.
Yeah, and I'm in the program, and I just, I'm so close to finishing my short film. It's been a very long process, and so I'm going to apply in film schools and things, and I hope to work on that kind of thing in the future.
In the near future, I hope to pursue a minor degree in the arts. I'm not sure exactly what, because there's so much that I love about, say, drawing and painting, and theater, music, everything. So, ideally, I get to pursue that, and possibly get some of my works published in the future, because I just adore everything. and possibly get some of my works published in the future because I just adore everything artistic.
So I actually spent the summer in New York at a art school and found out college is not for me, um, but I am planning on going, um, my own route into, uh, film directing and acting.
So I'm actually in the Graphic Design and Creative Media CRTC, and, um, I wanna major in graphic design. And, uh, so like, Senior One Acts helped me because like I'm a super creative person and like basically all types of creativity, so like, I like dance and sing and act and do it all.
Um, it's also kind of a funny story. I'm in the Criminal Justice CRTC. But I think one of the really awesome things about the Concord School District, especially at Concord High School, is that there's so many amazing arts programs, so that way students who don't necessarily want to professionally pursue it can still do something that makes them happy in high school, and I think that is something that I'm gonna wanna pursue in college too. So even though I wanna major in criminal justice, um, still pursue band, still pursue music, still pursue theater, and I think that's all really because of Mr. Cohen and Mr. Close.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh, for that question. Thank you all for sharing your future plans with us. Unless someone has something else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that you came down. Yeah.
Okay, something a little bit different, um, from theater. The pleasure of introducing New Hampshire's, uh, leading rusher in high school football, Ellie Bahuma. And his coach, Jim Corbin.
Hey, everybody. Really honored to be able to bring Ellie here tonight. Um, we had a great season this year, um, and a huge part of that was the, the success that Ellie had in the field along with his teammates. Um, just to give you a couple highlight points, Ellie rushed for over fifteen hundred yards this year, over twenty touchdowns. He was the leading rusher in the state. What was pretty impressive among that is we were fortunate in some games this year where, you know, this, the game was comfortable where we were able to take a lot of our starters out in the third and fourth quarter, which was probably four or five games, so had Ellie remain in those games this year, I'm sure he could have easily gone over two thousand yards. Um, but, you know, the, I could talk, I could go on and on for, about Ellie and what he's accomplished this year. We have a quick, uh, highlight video to show just some of his accomplishments over the year. Uh, it says seven minutes, but we'll just watch, um, a few minutes of that.
Jim, can you do the sound in the background for us?
Yeah, do the music for you. So I think you guys get the picture. He's pretty good. His total rushing yards for the year was a school record. His touchdowns in the season was a school record. Uh, his game against Keene was, uh, set the school record for rushing yards in a game, which I think was three hundred and thirteen, um, that he had in that game. Um, but Jack, I don't know if you have the picture that I sent in?
I think we, I, I think it went with the video I sent, we sent down, yeah, to Jack.
And so the nice thing also, um, just to give, I'm gonna let Ellie talk. You don't need to hear me speak too much. Um, but this was really only Ellie's second year ever playing football. Um, he came out his first year as a freshman. Um, he, as a sophomore, he was in our starting lineup, and he broke his, unfortunately broke his ankle in our first scrimmage of the summer, and he was done for the season. Um, so this was only his second year in a full football season, and lucky for us, he is only a junior. Uh, so he'll be coming back next year, so I gotta make sure I let Coach Latora know, for, he's playing on the varsity basketball team too, that he's not allowed to get hurt, so we need to make sure that we have him. And so the, uh, picture that Jack is, um, trying to pull up right now, if we can, if we can get it. Um, we have a student who's in one of our, um, high needs special education programs, um, but he, he loves football, and so we tried to make it habit. Um, once a week, I try to bring him to the gym and play catch with them, and there was a, a day this year we were going to do that, um, and Ellie was at lunch, um, and I just, I grabbed Ellie to see if he would come and, um, and join us to play catch. Um, and by the end, you can't, you can't see it there, but the student was holding Ellie's hand, um, they just wouldn't let him go, and they were playing for the entire time. So it just kinda, you know, he's a great football player, but just an even better human being and an individual, so I'll let, um, him speak a little bit about, about the, about the season and, and what his plans are.
So, uh, yeah, my name's Ellie Bahuma. I'm a junior. Um, as what Coach said, this is kind of my second year playing football. Uh, I didn't, I grew up not liking football. I didn't like the contact. I was more basketball, because basketball is safer for me. I got to high school and my friends were like, just try playing football. We played two-hand touch all the time, and there's no difference. So I tried it out one day, and I guess I was pretty good at it. Uh, and then my freshman year also, I got moved up to varsity. It was like the last game. I played with like two minutes left in the fourth quarter. It was a pretty good game for me. And then my sophomore year, I got injured, and then, so it was mostly just me trying to go through rehab and just recover and just get ready for the next season, but I got to play basketball, and then my junior year came, and everything just felt different. Um, the team chemistry was there, uh, everybody loved each other, everybody, like, they put their trust in me. They knew from day one that I was gonna do that. I was gonna do what they knew I could do. So it came to the season, you know, we lost week one to the best, one of the best teams in the state, and even though that was a loss for us, we still thought that we could hang with anybody, and that was a win in our book. And we moved on to the next week, played Keene, we caught a W, and we just went on the streak after that. Um, you know, we were all, I'll say, we all bought into what the coach was giving to us. We were all invested in this. We were all like, if we really do this, we could be one of those good teams that Concord High has had in, in a long time. And as we did, we went six and three, went to the playoffs, and then unfortunately lost in the first round. But even though we lost that game, I know everybody on the team is still happy that we were able to make it to the playoffs and that we had a winning season, because Concord High hasn't been like this in a while, you know. They haven't been to the playoffs, I don't know what year, but it was just, I know it was a long time ago, and, um, I don't know, I was born in Concord, New Hampshire, always lived here, loved living here, and I'm just glad that I got to put on the Concord High footballs.
Well, Ellie, thank you for coming in, um, watching your moves. It is a lot like two-hand touch with you, because not many people were getting a hand on you. Uh, but I also noticed that you, you not only have some pretty good moves, you throw a pretty good block in one of those highlights. So your teammates, I'm sure, are very happy to have you on your team as well, because you seem like a very selfless player, so, uh, and we're looking forward to next year, and you had those Lonnery guys scared. And they were, they may have come back and won, but you had them very scared. You did a, your team had an outstanding season, and, uh, thank you very much for sharing your talents with us and for coming down here and, and sharing, you know, a little bit of you with us as well. Does anybody have any, anything else they'd like to, or any questions? Another? Ms. Hastings is gonna point out that this is yet another one of her former students.
Another broken ground.
Broken ground, so that's, uh, well, that's just at all of our elementary schools provide outstanding. But, uh, thank you. Anybody else? And we look forward to seeing you come back hopefully to tell us all the things you do next year. Thank you.
So again, the, the speed agility race Ellie shows is definitely a form of art, nicely. So anyway, we had the theater kids and Ellie, and I wanted to do, um, one, uh, a student from a classroom work. That felt like appropriate. So I put a, um, a call out to the faculty, and I had two teachers, George Golden, our architecture teacher, and Erica Deach, one of our art teachers nominate the same student, and she's here tonight as they are Nora Dorgan.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share. Um, I'm Erica Deach.
And I'm George Golden, and, um, I teach, uh, I've had Nora in drafting one and drafting two, and now in architectural drawing, and it was, it was funny. I, I saw the, uh, the message from Mr. Reardon about a student with talent, and it just happened to be that day I, uh, we were talking about the, the importance of being able to hand sketch and visualize what you see in architecture. And I said, I actually still have my sketchbook from the first architecture class I took, and I wa- and I said, let me go and find it, and I'll share it with the students, and I said, but please, Nora, don't critique me, because I know she has, she keeps a sketchbook, and I know how good it is. At least I saw it last year. So I showed mine, and I was like, now let's see yours, Nora, and she opened it up and showed us this drawing, shared it with the rest of the kids in the class, and I was like, holy smokes. And it was unbelievable, and so right, right then there, I said, I need to, um, I, I need to, uh, let Mike know about this after, replied to his message, and I said, um, I said to Nora, I said, do you, would you mind presenting in front of the school board? And she goes, let me go home and talk to my parents, and then Mike, Mr. Reardon calls me up and he goes, unbelievable. Erica just nominated the same student.
And believe it or not, we didn't talk to each other. But I'm not surprised, um, that both of us nominated Nora. She is a phenomenal student. Um, I've been lucky enough to have her in sculpture last year, and I have her in ceramics this year, but, um, she's been a part of National Honor Society for four years, so I've known her as a freshman. Um, and starting with her sketchbooks, um, you could consider those a work of art as well. Um, she is someone who is on top of detail. Her details have details. Works incredibly hard, um, as a teacher, when you are presenting like a, a project or a problem that students need to solve, um, you always have expectations, and Nora is someone who exceeds those expectations. She even exceeds the exceeding of my expectations. Um, so it's just been, um, very exciting as a teacher to have a student like Nora in your class.
Yeah, thank you. Um, well, I guess we can go to the next slide. Um, I've just put a bunch of my work on the slideshow. Um, but starting in, in drafting one, um, this was towards the end of the year. We were making small house designs, um, which was kind of like an introduction to like architecture, I guess, for me, um, which is what I wanna pursue after, after high school. So, um, it was very interesting to like learn all about how to build a house kind of correctly and how to make windows and make it functional and all that, all that sort of stuff. Um, this is, it's just some more of my like more technical drawings, um, some, like the, the one on the left side, um, was done like shaped three dimensionally, uh, whereas the one on the right was more two dimensional. Um, but they both kind of show the same things, just with different softwares and, you know, learning how to look at an object and kind of draft it out. And this one is an assembly and multi-view drawing, so I had to draw all the separate pieces of this one, you know, mechanism, uh, and then assemble them together, uh, once again, making them three dimensionally, like sculpting them in, in some software.
So Nora, can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
And have you swapped mics, because I have someone who said that they're not able to hear you?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can put it closer to me too.
And, uh, sometimes our batteries sort of fade away, so, thank you. Everybody, because obviously people are texting me saying they want to hear what you have to say.
All right, well, I'll continue then. Um, this one was towards the end of drafting two, um, where once again I had to three dimensionally sculpt, um, these different pieces and make sure they all fit together perfectly, because the isometric view on the top, um, I had to actually animate to make that little piston work and move around, which I don't have the video, because it wouldn't upload. But you can, you can imagine, it kind of spins around and it actually works, so. And this was our final, uh, project for drafting two, uh, where we had to kind of take all of the desks and all the necessary pieces of our classroom and redesign them so that they'd be up to code and functional and just make a lot of sense for what we needed. Um, so I, you know, I used what I had and measured the room and everything and made a, a new design that would work well for the classroom. Yeah, transitioning into, um, my sculpture class, uh, this piece, which I actually have here, um, in person, is a cardboard relief sculpture, um, and it had to be, the, the project was it had to be abstract. Um, so I decided to take an actual photo and sort of abstract it to make it more stylized and creative, um, and obviously make it three dimensional. Um, so you can see some of my original sketches, just looking at the photo, and then kind of evolving it into my own kind of thing for the final project. and then kind of evolving it into my own kind of thing for the final project. This one I don't have here today, but, um, our assignment was to make an animal out of like wires. Um, and I took not just wires, but this like mesh kind of stuff. Um, and made really the full body of this nautilus. Um, and took it a step farther too, to kind of embroider copper wire into the like mesh material, um, which was painful, but it looks pretty cool. So, yeah, wires are sharp. Um, but it, it took quite a while, but you know, it's very, very detailed, so. This one, which I also have here, is, um, a beetle that I've made entirely out of recycled, um, materials. So all kinds of trash and packaging, the base of it is made out of a couple of milk cartons, actually. Um, and the, the assignment was to make just a litter bug, um, that was any sort of insect made out of recycled materials. And I had already been drawing a lot of beetles, which are the, the two, uh, green ones on the bottom. Um, and I thought, wow, this is the perfect opportunity so I can make this. Uh, and I wanted to take it a step further and make wings that would fold out and like fold back into it. So it was a little more accurate to the real kind of animal. Um, so it's, obviously it's pretty big and the shell kind of folds up and there's little wings in there. So it's kind of functioning. This one was, um, I think our first ceramic kind of sculpture. Uh, and the assignment was just to sculpt a hand of any sort. Um, and so I immediately thought of M.C. Asher's Drawing Hands, um, piece, which is the drawing in the corner, um, which I didn't do, obviously, but I thought it'd be really cool to make it three dimensional because that uses multiple hands and, you know, we only have like one picture of it. So it would be kind of thinking out of the box to make it like actually 3D. So it took quite a while, but there, the piece is actually like life-size hands too, so. This is my, uh, one of my earlier ceramics, um, projects. And I, it was a pinch pot that we just had to make, any sort of pinch pot. Um, and I decided to make a mug, but I wanted to make it, you know, kind of funky. And you can see all of my sketches, uh, on, off to the right, where I'm just kind of going through all the different ideas that I want to include. And my final design kind of incorporates all of them, um, in kind of a crazy way, so. And this last one is personally my favorite. Um, she's here today too. Um, I had seen like pictures of people putting little head scarves on their cats and they, they looked like little grandmas and I thought it was really cute. So I decided to make, um, an entire one out of clay. Um, so our original assignment was just to make shoulders up the head of an animal that was kind of human-like. But I kind of wanted to take it further and make the whole body of this little cat lady. So, um, you can see some of my sketches of figuring out how to put it together and sort of what I wanted her to look like and my thought process of using different colors and making it a little mismatched, so she seemed a little more real. Yeah, that's about it. That's the end of the presentation.
I can't believe you just said that's about it. Because, you know, I understand where you mean exceeding, you're exceeded. Especially your, your artistic creativity as well as your natural engineering ability is really impressive. And as far as your school design, we're thinking about a new middle school and I'd like to get you on board this project pretty early on.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm qualified for that.
I think you do a pretty good job personally from what I've seen. Um, thank you very much for sharing this. It is truly impressive. And I'm gonna let Ms. Walsh ask her question.
So you want to study architecture?
Yeah, I plan on majoring in architecture and possibly doing a minor in art.
And do you know where you want to head yet?
Uh, I don't know yet. I have, I have some choices, but I haven't gotten a lot of, um, letters back yet, so.
Well, it's early.
Yeah.
I'm sure you'll get lots.
I'm fairly confident of that. Anyone else have any questions or anything? Nora, thank you so much for sharing this. Truly impressive.
Yeah, thanks for letting me share, so.
Thank you, Mr. Reardon, for sharing some of your students.
It's easy work.
I, um, and I, I know why Dr. Herbert is so interested in this job. Very impressive.
Easy street, easy street.
Superintendent?
I think we're ready for recognitions and reports, um, if you want to move to that.
Very good.
I just can't tell you how, when we talked about celebrations as we're trying to do something every month, um, just a sampling, and that is a sampling of the, the, the work that our students do at the high school. Uh, they do start somewhere in our elementary schools as, um, attested by, um, Mrs. Hastings. But, um, outstanding, um, work and achievement by our students. And, uh, it's just, it's really nice to have, to share that with you, so.
Well, then following along, oh, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you also to the staff that helps support and allow these kids to create the environment that they can flourish in. So thank you.
Yeah, you should be very proud. We're very proud of you. Thank you very much, Ms. Cannon, for that. So with that, we'll s, we'll stay at Concord High, right? And go with Finn.
Hi, everyone. Uh, winter sports are starting up soon. And as winter is approaching, it's also becoming a cold and flu season, so hopefully everyone can stay healthy. Um, I think we're giving flu shots at the school right now. I think so. Um, last month we had some cool events, including senior one acts, a volleyball tournament, a hypnotist show where I was hypnotized with some classmates and teachers. And then this month we have, uh, some upcoming events, I know they're already mentioned, but, um, there's a concert on the twelfth, a jazz concert on the fifteenth. There's a Triumph movie night on the twentieth where they, they're gonna be playing a Spider-Man movie, I think. And then obviously our holiday break, um, before the new year. And so the students are participating in those events, as you saw, they've been working really hard to prepare. So hopefully, um, there's a good turnout for all those things. And yeah, we're just trying to work hard for the rest of this month and, uh, look forward to the new year. But there's a lot to be proud of, definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Does anybody have any questions for? Very good. So, but go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
Do you want to take a?
That's what I was going to do. Before we, before, I was gonna do that, I was gonna say, before you can go on, Ms. Murphy, and not to imply that these wonderful students aren't interested in what your report would be, but I think we'll take a very brief break, probably for just three to five minutes, for anyone who may not, will find it interesting to stay for the rest of our meeting and want to get up and go move on. I know you all have classes you need to study for. Thank you. So we'll take a, we'll take a five-minute break. Thank you. So, um, thank you all for that brief recess and, um, we're back with item seven B. Superintendent, that is your report.
Thank you. I have a, just a couple of items to bring up tonight. Of course, what's on everybody's lips was what happened today, uh, and I wanted to update you on the school cancellation. Um, and I, I did send out a quick, uh, email to parents, uh, this afternoon. Um, met with, uh, talked to a couple of reporters, so we got some, um, some information out, via the local papers. Uh, and, but I, I wanted to share with you tonight, this is a perfect opportunity. The last couple of Mondays haven't been my friend, but, um, we did have a situation early this morning, um, notified by the head custodian who notified Mr. Cashman, um, concerns regarding the temperature, uh, in the server room. And we have servers in the high school in an, in, in, and it's a room that's not on an outside wall. It's an internal room, interior room, if you will, uh, high. As a matter of fact, it was about a hundred and twenty degrees. And that was of great concern. And so we, um, immediately, Matt, uh, jumped in. Uh, Jack, uh, came over from his home early morning to s, to see if he could be of assistance, uh, to, to, to identify what the problem was. And of course Pam McLeod, given her responsibilities around technology, was notified. She and I actually conversed, um, in the early morning. But clearly it, um, uh, two air conditioners, two very large air conditioners that are housed in the server room to keep the temperature down. As you know, for those of you who are familiar, those big servers create a lot of heat. And so you have to have, um, air conditioning to keep the temperature. Um, th, th, it, they like it around room temperature, sixty-eight to seventy-two, Matt?
Sixty-eight to seventy-two.
Yeah, so you want to keep it down. So twenty-two, we were in way in excess of what, um, would require. And as a result, servers were shutting down, information was not available. Um, we, um, and because we're so tied to that system, remember, our phones are all tied to it, all the in, and the internet. So the systems that I nee, we need to run our schools, some people said, well, you know, the kids could just do their books and the paper and pencil. And we, if that were just the case, we would have done books and paper and pencil today. But it was more about the issues around safety and each and every one of the buildings in the city, um, having the ability to reach out should there be an emergency. Um, I, I, when I first talked to them in the morning, um, there was a, uh, a, a possibility that we could be up and running, um, and I just needed a delay. And so I arrived there, Matt was already there, Jack was there, and of course the team was there, the IT team. And, um, we realized by about ten minutes of eight that that was not gonna happen. Um, we needed more time, we didn't have any of the systems up and running. So unfortunately I had to cancel school. Matt, will you fill, um, them in on some of the, um, the actions that you took this morning for me?
Morning started at five o'clock. We, we got the message that the server room was about a hundred and twenty-two degrees. On my way in from home, I called, uh, United Rentals and got a temporary AC staged and put up in the room. Uh, immediately they opened the doors and put fans in to evacuate that hot air out of that room. So it was a good, uh, first measure. I also called another HVAC company, Train, who we do the, our majority of our work with. They just aren't, they, they weren't the company that serviced those two pieces of equipment due to their uniqueness. But I still called their tech in. He came in, he got one unit running and, uh, just came back from there about a half an hour ago. Both units were running about two thirty-three o'clock, but again, we still had to keep the temperature down. The, uh, internal servers that are on the tower, I think Jack, what did Pam say? We have about a hundred of those in the tower. They were still reading high temps even after we started to cool the room down. So, um, IT worked extremely hard to get them slowly brought back online. And so far it is back online. The, uh, the company that services the units, they are here. I just spent time with them. We looked at the roof condensers, which serve these two internal units. They're stabilized. He's gonna come back, he's staying in the area. He's gonna come back first thing in the morning and do a complete service of both units and get them back up and going. I will note, one of the units, uh, is, uh, two thousand, uh, seven, so it's about fifteen years old. And back in two thousand thirteen, we bought a, a second unit so that they could run in tandem. So if we ever had one fail, uh, we had that redundancy. So we're still gonna find out more from the preventive maintenance report after they go through both machines. But so far the good news is we are back online.
Questions for Mr. Cashman? Go ahead, Mr. Cash.
Is, is there a, uh, a way we could put a, uh, an alarm system in? Is, is there a, uh, a way we could put a, uh, an alarm system in so that when, let's say it gets above eighty-five degrees, uh, that, uh, we could be notified so that it doesn't get to a hundred and twenty degrees, uh, and we could act quicker?
We can.
Well, we, Matt, Bob, we have an alarm system. Um, the alarm system was notified, um, early Sunday morning, but the message was not received by the person that gets the messages. They didn't, they had their s- school phone, but they ha- they did not see their messages come in. And as a result, um, that, um, was allowed to continue to heat up. And so, yes, we did have, we do have that. We do have alarms.
Well, I would suggest then that we send it to four people instead of one person.
Right, right, right. Exactly. So, Matt, Matt and I and Jack haven't quite finished this whole review of what happened, um, what happened to the equipment, um, what happened to the delay in notifications and why, um, the response wasn't immediate. So, we're, we're in that process right now. And I will keep you abreast of, of what the results are.
Ms. Walsh?
Um, so both air conditioners?
Yes.
Failed? Remarkably bad luck.
Let me, let me, let me step back. One didn't fail. One was under extreme duress to try to keep up with the one that failed. So, it just didn't have enough to catch up and get that room cool. So that's when the temperature exceeded.
Um, so it was phones and internet? Were there any other systems?
Oh, all of the systems went down. Munis system, which is all of our business, um, you know, product, also all of the systems that we use for student information system, that was down. That didn't come back till this afternoon. So, um, and the phones were somewhat intermittent throughout the afternoon. But, but by tonight around four, everything was back up.
So, I know, because I've gotten Parents Square or whatever, or whatever our current system is notices in the past, that we have, phones have gone down at a particular building. Generally close those schools when their phone systems go down. So, I guess my question is, are those buildings unsafe on those days when the phones are, are down? Or should we have?
Well, we, we do know that that happens.
Yeah.
And we have to take the data that we have regarding that situ- situation and can it be fixed so that it's not a long-term situation. Um, there are, um, there are cell phones, but we were afraid to rely on those today because you can be at Broken Ground or one of the other schools and you don't have great cellphone, um, connections out there. So, w- we, we know that our principals have cell phones, but we didn't feel it was enough to be able to cover if we had an emergency. And, and you're right, we, our phones on occasion do go down. Um, but usually, it's correct. A message because parents call and can't get through. Um, we have the, the one other system that we have in place, and Matt mentioned it, I think, at one of our safety meetings, that we have a system where we have a direct, um, panic bu- not a panic button, but a, a system that we alert the police station.
Right, a radio.
Right.
And so are we considering any other types of redundancies, uh, you know, old-school copper landline in each of the buildings? Uh, you joke, but when the state installed VoIP, we had these discussions because VoIP goes down when the internet goes down.
Right, right.
So.
Well, we haven't got that far yet. I mean, we've just been about, you know, uh, twelve, fifteen hours since the event. And, um, we had a chance today to talk about what, um, we're still looking at causes and what happened and why, and why we had two air conditioners that didn't, you know, service us. Um, what about the contracts with the company? What, 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 what happened there? Um, Matt did bring to me a belt that was worn, pretty worn, in one of the air conditioners. Why wasn't that replaced? So we have a lot of questions that we're asking right now before we jump into, um, what do we have for, um, systems that would be redundant to pre- prevent this from ever happening again.
Go ahead.
Um, did the alarm only send a message once? How?
It sent two, the, the message was sent twice. It was sent one at six in the morning and one at seven o'clock at night.
On the weekend.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Hastings.
Uh, this is the second incident in a short period of time where people have been, um, sent messages and they've not been looked at or received or acted on. And both times have resulted in schools being closed. Are we encouraging people who have these phones to be notified in case of emergency that even if it is the weekend, they need to be checking their phones?
We talk about it all the time.
Right. So, so
We definitely.
In the first incident, the messages came in in the middle of the night at two o'clock in the morning. And so we, we, we understood that for some, it just didn't get picked up in the middle of the night. We, we've corrected that since then. So now that there are multiple more people on that, that phone tree, if you will, along with an immediate, um, call to the police station. So they are immediately notified along with that list of people. That was the first incident. Those are the corrections we made. I think I shared that with you at the last meeting. This one, um, we're looking at who, who else was on that list? Were, were there any other people on that list? I don't know that yet. Okay? So we're studying that. Um, and I, I'll have that with Pam's, Pam McLeod's help. Um, and why wasn't the message picked up on the weekend? Because we would expect that to be ha- to be have done, to have been done. And it wasn't.
Okay.
Mr. Weinberg first and then Ms. Walsh.
So on a similar note, are there other procedures in which this is a similar mechanism where it goes to a singular person that we should be looking at or that we know?
Matt, go ahead.
I mean, that's what we're talking about. We're increasing the, the scope of who gets notified. Because a lot of times in these two instances, they did happen well after hours and they hel- happened on a weekend. So, the more widespread weekend continues until somebody acknowledges it. Again, you, when, when we heard of it at five o'clock this morning, we were right on it. And we spent the entire day on it. We, we had to do what we had to do to get those servers to be reliable and back up to speed.
That was actually my question.
Okay. Um, so I, my question and what I will say is, you know, just to, I expect that probably this will come to Capitol facilities ca- in near future where we will reevaluate our preventive, our, uh, preventive maintenance program on, with regards to this. Because it is certainly unfortunate and somewhat unusual that you have two redundant systems fail at a time. And I would expect that we would be looking at, uh, evaluating the sizing of the equipment. Because as we have expanded, um, our computer capabilities, our servers, all of the devices that we put in that room, and this is not unique to us, this happens everywhere, is you need to reevaluate your ability to, uh, you know, to handle that load. Um, and then, once again, I would reiterate what my colleagues already have said is to review the protocol and the procedures with regards to, um, alarms and responses. And, you know, I applaud you for expanding that, um, that phone tree. But I think you need to have a clear, I think people need to have a clear understanding of what their expectations are, when they get called or when that goes along. And if necessary, we may need to have to designate it on, designate on-call people if that's, uh, whose responsibility and, um, is to, you know, respond to those items. And so, I guess I would say I look forward to hearing more about this in the future to make sure that, because Ms. Hastings' point is quite good, is that we need to take a hard look at this and make sure that other systems and Mr. Weinberg's statement as well, that other systems that, um, we don't end up with the same thing happening down the road. I don't know if anybody else has anything beyond that. But, uh, Mr. Cashman and Superintendent, we look forward to seeing this, well, at the, uh, Capitol facilities or perhaps at a budgetary meeting as we get into next year. Anything else? All right, pers- you can proceed.
Very unfortunate, I'm afraid. So, um, the, the only other issue that I wanted to address was the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three calendar. Ja- Jack, could you put that up for me? Because I don't, I don't have that one in your book.
I think they were in the instructional committee. I think they should have been included.
Well, no, this is, I'm not doing the twenty, I'm just doing this year's, yeah, yeah. I'm not doing, um,
Next year.
Next year's, yeah. We have that on the calendar. Um, I was looking for my, uh, here it is right here. So, I want to bring your attention to, um, the January one holiday. January first, New Year's, is a federal holiday, falls on Sunday. You can see that in the calendar for this year?
Mm-hmm.
And when we did the calendar, we assigned that holiday, given that the youngsters were out for a whole week, we assigned that holiday to December thirtieth, um, in terms of providing for our employees that need to have a federal holiday, right? And, um, so I'm just bringing that to your attention because there are some folks who believe we should not be in school on that day. There's no requirement. There are other holidays that are federal holidays that, uh, districts go to school. Uh, Indigenous Ho- uh, Day is, People's Day is one of those days where school districts can decide whether they're in or out. Um, and so when we developed this calendar last year, reviewed it and, and approved, that we went with the December thirtieth to celebrate New Year's Day holiday for our employees because everyone was out. So I just want to bring you that, that to your attention. Should you, should you have any other, uh, ideas or desires to, with that day? Um, we have got feedback that some feel that we shouldn't be in school that day because it's a federal holiday.
Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
This calendar, before it was brought to the board, the, um, NEA had another collective bargaining unit
Yeah, well, that's, yes, yes, yes.
And signed off on it.
Right.
Okay.
But I think they also have realized what they signed off on after the fact. But, um,
And I appreciate that. And just personally, if we hadn't changed, added, added a voting day that we gave the students off unexpectedly and had, this would be the third unscheduled day, not including any snow days, and then the fourth for Runlet students.
Right.
So, I wouldn't make a change.
Okay, thank you. Other thoughts?
And, and, Mrs. Walsh, Ms. Walsh's, um, comments are appropriate because we haven't hit the winter season yet.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Personally, um, I appreciate the, um, NEA's willingness to allow us to put days in and take days out of the calendars. It's so late a time, there may be a day, a time that we may need to do that, I don't know. But I think, given the statements that you just made with regards to, uh, to the days that we already have had off, that I would be less inclined personally to, to add that day in there. Um, I don't know if anybody else has other thoughts that they wish to. Go ahead, Mr. Con.
I, I would agree with both you, Jim and Pam. I, I think the other concern that we have to have is, uh, the June date, when is school finally over? And, uh, you know, obviously depending on the number of, uh, snow days, et cetera, we're already at June thirteenth. Um, uh, I think we're pushing it a bit, given that we seem to be missing school a fair amount lately. So, uh, I, I would suggest that we keep the calendar as it is.
The days in red on the calendar are the required days that I must submit five snow days in my calendar when I submit it to the Department of Ed. It must, the calendar must reflect those five days. Um, thirteenth, that's why we put tentative because, you know, and I suspect that graduation for our high school youngsters will be on the seventeenth of, of, of June.
Am I right in seeing that if we've already had two days canceled, that we are now at no, we're no longer at a June thirteenth, last day of school? Where to June sixteenth, last day of school?
Yeah. Well, you've got two days you've got to make up so far. You've ma- you have to make up the day
So right now it would be the fifteenth?
Primary day and today. So that would be at the fifteenth.
Okay.
Um, but hoping that you, you know, I don't know what the weather's going to bring.
I know there is a lot of resistance when we go into nineteen-twenty because it's after graduation. It's also at a time when parents and teachers have made plans for their summer vacation. And they're already, you know, to, to, when we go in and say, oh, by the way, forget those plans on the nineteenth and twentieth because we need to bring you back, that it causes a lot of issues as well. That's my concern.
It does. But I, I really feel a responsibility for every single day that we, we, we owe students in terms of instruction. So
No, I don't, I don't disagree with you on that.
It's always a
I'm just being conservative and a little, um, careful with those days. Because I don't want to go into those
Right.
days. I want us to be able to, uh, you know, to hopefully have one snow day maybe and not a whole lot more. But, uh, we will see what Mother Nature gives us. Um, other thoughts? Go ahead, Mr. Parker.
Just that this isn't, um, this has been going on for a long, long time, snow days and when we get out. I mean, it's a perennial sort of
I know.
Question, concern. Um, but it's been going on for fifty years. So, when you start, when you end, it really depends on the number of snow days. Blah, 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 blah. So, you know, that's what it is.
I just wanted to bring the whole situation to your attention
Thank you.
in case you had any, any constituents, um, ask you about it. And I thought it was right to keep you posted. And again, because we have missed a couple of days now, we're already chasing, you know, our, our requirements. And remember, it's a hundred and eighty days or nine hundred and forty-five hours at elementary and nine ninety for secondary. So, I want to try to, I want to be able to provide that for our students.
Thank you, Superintendent. Anybody else? Okay, are we set to move on?
I, I think the next, um, item is one that, um, the instructional committee has been engaged in. And, um, in order for you to understand the breadth of the s- credit issues at the high school and, um, the, uh, high school staff would like to do a, a brief presentation to you around, um, uh, the credit allocations for our students at Concord High School.
Hi again, everyone. Um, so, uh, the board asked us to, in fact, since it's a non-student, you don't have to.
No class of twenty-eight.
It's your call. Uh, you asked us to look, uh, at, uh, the possibility of raising cred- the credit requirements, uh, for graduation. So I'll just say subjectively that, um, when that came down, Kathleen talked to us about that, um, it seemed like a the more, uh, it seemed like just something that needed to be done. And it didn't seem actually to be that difficult to figure out how it should be done. And, um, you have in front of us, in front of us, in front of you, um, uh, on the first page of the handout, I think, uh, a proposal for rolling this out. Not surprisingly, we're suggesting that this would begin with an incoming freshman class, with next year's freshman class, um, that we would raise the, uh, credits required for graduation from the state minimum of twenty to twenty-two and a half. And more to the point, um, that those two and a half credits would be, uh, one in math, uh, one in electives, and a half credit in social studies. Um, I want to just take a second to talk about the math credit. Currently, uh, we require, as you can see, that, uh, you, a student only needs three math credits to graduate, um, from Concord High School. And a lot of students are taking for their third, uh, math credit, a course outside of the math department, uh, in the business department. It's called money management. So we have about a hundred and fifty kids in there who are, um, taking two traditional math classes and a third one that's, uh, really a business class not taught by a math teacher. Um, I don't want to make too big of a point of it, but I think that the ramifications of that in terms of things like our SAT scores are, are pretty manifest. I don't want to make too big of a point of it, but I think that the ramifications of that in terms of things like our SAT scores are, are pretty manifest. And I think, um, that's, when, when I said below, in some aspects of raising the credit requirement, that this is a qualitative, uh, a quantitative, not a qualitative, uh, consideration, that's what I'm talking about. Um, the math credits and, and then, uh, should be raised, and then the following year, we are, uh, suggesting that it would be raised to the full twenty-four, that that would include a science credits going from three to four. And, uh, perhaps the innovative part here is that we would look at students being required to do an out-of-classroom experience for at least half a credit. Um, that could be a capstone project, it could be a, a college course, um, it could be some type of ELO in the community. Um, that's probably the most complicated part of this in terms of it's, it's going to take, uh, some thinking about how to, um, uh, keep it logistically, uh, on balance and, and, uh, all the legwork that's in qua- that's going to be required. Um, I'd also point out to the board, as you think about, uh, responding to this, that currently, uh, our students in our present master schedule, have the capacity to earn thirty-two credits over four years. And as you can see from the chart that accompanies this, two things. One, there are some kids who earn more than thirty-two credits. And but more importantly, mo- most kids, um, about seventy-five percent, seventy-five to eighty percent, if you look at the figures for the last, uh, four or five years, are already earning twenty-four credits or above. Most kids, in fact, uh, who graduate from Concord High School, earn twenty-five or twenty-six credits. So, um, it's a lot to think about, but I think it's, um, a very doable thing. I don't think that there, at least at the outset, are a lot of, um, personnel implications to this. Perhaps down the line, uh, especially with science and math, in two or three years, maybe four years, there could be. Uh, but I think at the outset, there's not, that's not going to be the case.
Go ahead, Ms. Cannon, and then Mr. Cotton.
I've got a bunch, so if you're, if you're.
I just got one.
Okay, go for it.
At least to start with, and that is, why are you doing it in two phases? Why not just move to twenty-four right away?
Because it, it allows us to, um, not, uh, do it, and I think doing any type of change, um, that affects kids' grading, their, uh, progress towards graduation should be done gradually, um, to give them time to adjust to that and, um, and to meet our growing expectations.
So, a follow-up to that then is, a year enough?
Yeah, I think it is, in my view.
Dr. Hebert, to be up here.
Come on up front.
So, we talked about a variety of things from like, uh, personnel capacity to where are we right now curriculum-wise with the courses that we would be expecting students or we, we believe students would choose, uh, as well as our ELO capacity, if that were indeed one of our, our next, uh, requirements. Just, it really comes to creating the curriculum, getting ready for it is part of it, and, and giving staff the time to do their due diligence on that is part of it. And then the other piece is budgeting for what we're doing. Do we need the personnel, um, you know, if we, if we increase that math requirement, really digging into our data, how many kids are already meeting the four, uh, class, uh, math class requirement in true math classes? And trying to determine, you know, break those numbers out and determine, uh, how many FTEs, is it a full FTE? What are we really looking at that, that the, uh, department would need? So, we've been doing a lot of looking at the data and looking at the trends and trying to do this tactically. So that's, that's really, uh, kind of the approach we've been taking to make sure we're doing it fiduciary, uh, fiduciary due diligence. We're doing our, uh, you know, like giving the teachers the time to create and putting in place quality curriculum and really giving us a time with the extended learning opportunities outside of classroom experience. Um, we have one person who man's at right now, and it's really thinking about how do you expand that capacity if all of a sudden you've asked fifteen hundred kids to do this? And, and that, you know, those are kind of the things that we've talked about and need some more time to flesh out, but.
We will start in February by going down to Runlet and talking to those, and Deerfield Community School, and share with them that for their incoming freshmen, their credit number will increase. That'll give us really good data to see, do we come to capacity with a lot of our classes with them? We might come back to you this time next year and say we need another year to go to the full twenty-four credits if all of a sudden we see we're reaching capacity, um, with what we have for personnel. So I think that we're optimistic we can do this in two years, but we're going to collect a lot of data, even from this ninth grade class, to see what do they sign up for come February, and we'll go from there. So we might, we might need another year, uh, but we'll collect the data just like we have here. Uh, Tom Kerman does a phenomenal job of looking at that for us, and we'll be able to make some adjustments, um, as needed.
Thank you.
And I would say, just one added point, Bob, is as time goes on and we start, uh, re, you know, seeing things come up, uh, getting a better idea on that, we'll keep Instructional Committee informed and the support informed as well. But, uh, especially around the areas we mentioned that we might need to look at, if the FTE need and the resources that we need to bring that to fruition, so.
I know Ms. Cannon has several questions, but I would want to piggyback on this with, right now, students, some students have difficulty, it's not that, uh, that there aren't enough classes, but that doesn't fit their schedule. Now we're adding more requirements, um, would, are we looking at a potentially having to narrow the breadth of the offerings we have in order to increase the depth so that kids can get this AP class, this extra math class, and their English class, and get a schedule that, that works? I already know that there are several students who take, you know, V-Lax PE because it's hard to get that to fit your schedule. So I guess, are you looking in, you know, as we implement this or as we go, get closer to this, do we take a look at not just do we have the capacity, but do we have the capacity that meshes for kids to be able to do that?
Absolutely, we're looking at that because we do know there's offerings that, e- every year that comes, you know, a group of students, we would love to offer the class, but we don't have the teacher capacity to offer it because of some of our other requirements, uh, that we're trying to meet. But in addition to that, we're also looking from the spectrum of what, to make sure we can continue to offer quality and our, you know, a well, uh, well, uh, breadth of opportunities. We're also looking at, we, on the other end, we have a number of students who've struggled to make the twenty credits right now and things that Mike and Kylene, myself, any one of us can speak to, like our wind days that we've implemented this year. We're trying to look at, uh, more proactive ways of, uh, supporting students along, whether it's a student taking that, those, uh, higher level courses that really pigeonholes their schedule, that it's tight, like band being one of them. You saw some amazing kids here today. They're ones who are o- often fall victim to that. We might have to take something on V-Lax. Keeping those opportunities open for students, but also how do we support other students who may need some support classes who will also get, it, it becomes difficult to meet those requirements. And some of the additional supports we built into our schedules, wind day being one of them, um, and looking at how we can use the extended learning opportunity for flexibility, uh, to, to achieve some of the credit, the elective credits that we require is really what we're trying to, uh, navigate those channels. But with that being said, again, it comes back to why Mike, Mike said we will go twenty-two and a half and then the twenty-four because we, we sit here, we look at what we have, we look at our resources, we line things up, and it looks good. It makes sense. We don't know the numbers coming in, we don't know what the enrollments are going to be. We're, we're guessing on historical trends, and we really feel like if we did all or nothing right now, we could be straining systems like, just like you're talking, and there could be certain areas that we would struggle to keep those opportunities open.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Cannon, for your patience. Go ahead.
No problem. So, my questions kind of follow up on, on both Jim and Bob's. You know, as I, as I was, I mean, I'm all for rigorous study, um, you know, and I, and, and rigorous requirements, but my concern is a couple of pieces. Um, one, when I was looking at your, your bar charts about the credits for graduation, nowhere on those cred- on those charts does it tell me how many kids did not get to graduate because they didn't have their twenty credits. And if you add those students in along with the students that wouldn't then graduate because they had fifteen, or because they had twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, not, not yet the twenty-two and a half, um, you're talking about twenty percent of the student body, roughly. That's concerning. Now, I understand that, that people's schedules and their planning would be different with their guidance counselors. You would, if you knew that you had to take six classes a year to graduate, suddenly you'd, you'd somehow find the wherewithal to take that sixth class. But I'm concerned that we're looking at currently, if, it's not really apples and, uh, we're, we're kind of comparing apples and oranges, but if you're looking at the kids that aren't making it, plus the kids that weren't, wouldn't have made the cutoff, you're talking about roughly twenty percent of the kids. And I'm concerned that twenty percent of our kids not get left behind. That, that number is truly alarming to me. If it were five percent, seven percent, I would think we could have enough support. But trying to come up with enough support for twenty percent of our students is concerning.
Gina, I, I'm not, can you, I'm not that bright, as you know, can you, where are you getting to twenty percent?
That are on page forty-five of the, of the board file.
She's saying if we raise it to twenty-two.
If you add those kids that are, uh, at twenty, twenty-one and tw-.
Oh, oh, that are currently below the twenty-four.
And how many didn't graduate?
So, can I share two facts for you, just, one thing is that, and it might be important for the whole school board to know, there is a Concord High School diploma and there is a Concord School District diploma. The Concord School District diploma will stay in place, and the minimum requirements for that will be twenty credits. And right now, we have a Concord School District diploma where there are students who are struggling to meet the requirements, have an alternative set of requirements where some, I think the perception is they're easier to acquire. I'm not so sure that's the case. You earn a couple credits through some work, work-based learning. Um, there's some additional ways you can show your aptitude and skills, and so that is still going to be in existence. And we have several students, even now, who meet the twenty credit requirement through the Concord School District diploma, not the Concord High School diploma. I think the other piece is, you're right, and I, I mean, you could, you can hope on one hand that they're going to meet that, but we feel strongly that if twenty-four credits is what we feel students need to be college and career-ready, we have to do everything in our power to make sure that they're meeting those expectations. And so, I, you know, I think we can.
I don't disagree. I mean, I, I, I'm all for academic rigor and, and preparing our young people for whatever comes next after high school. But my, my concern is that we not, in our, in our, in our desire, our aspiration to bring everybody up, that we don't lose the kids that are already struggling with the requirements that they currently have.
Right. Talked about, uh, and, and Tim did as well, about the opportunities we offer at, uh, Concord High School for kids to recover competencies, to recover credits. Uh, the wind days are just the most recent one, and we do, uh, a lot over the summer with competency recovery. Say what? Yeah, Diploma Academy. Uh, we have, we have flex, uh, teachers who are available to work with kids on things. So, from an academic standpoint, Gina, there's a lot of support and opportunities to come up to the mark. A lot of the time, that the, the reason that kids are not doing that are not academic in nature. There, there are issues that are beyond the classroom, beyond the school, that are affecting their ability to, uh, be successful as students. And we work very hard to address those issues as well and to get them put to a place where they can, uh, function as students. But I think ultimately, it's our responsibility, our responsibility and the community as, as a whole, to make sure that we have reasonable and balanced standards, that we're holding the kids accountable for reach, reaching. Not because that makes us look, look better or that we're, you know, we're bringing kids up to the mark. We're saying twenty-four credits, uh, over a period of four years, when you have the opportunity to earn thirty-two just in regular classroom, uh, work, is a balanced, thoughtful, and reasonable approach. Especially when we're working so hard to give kids a lot of different opportunities for support. So, you know, the easiest thing for us to do in, in this case, for us, and I'm talking about all of us, is to do nothing and just let things kind of sit where they are. And, um, I think that, that raising this in a two-step process to twenty-four credits, um, makes sense to us.
And again, I don't disagree. I'm all for academic rigor. My, I, I just want everyone to be aware that we could be talking about leaving twenty percent of our kids in a position where they're going to substantially struggle. And, and the lift for that, to support them and raise them up, both staff-wise, um, MTSS, um, credit recovery, other supports, tutoring, all of that stuff, it, it's a big, it's potentially a really big lift. So, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, okay? I, I, I'm one of those people that was, was, would have been your thirty-two credits, so I, I'm not, I'm, I'm.
No, I, I.
Really big lift, not only to the twenty, to, not, not just the twenty-four, but to the twenty-two and a half. For some of our kids, it's going to be a really big lift, and the support that has to go in under that, not just the, the additional faculty to cover the classes, but the support for, to bring those other kids up, is, is going to be a lift.
Yeah. I, I, I'm, I'm not sure that I entirely agree with that, Gina. I think, I think putting, putting the expectation to the incoming freshman, giving them the support that, that we pointed out, but also things like a freshman orientation and, and all this work we've done on SEL, uh, in our school. Uh, making sure the kids feel emotionally and physically safe in the building, uh, preparing them to be successful as students. And if they understand coming in that they are, their expectation is twenty-four credits over four years, yeah, there may, inevitably, there's going to be kids who struggle. I mean, we could have fifteen credits and there'd be some kids who would struggle. But they're knowing that this twenty-four is the mark that they have to meet, I think most of them will, will, will meet that and go beyond it, as they're doing already.
Gina, I would just add to that, what you're bringing up is part of our discussions on what is it going to take to really, if we're moving up to twenty-four, what is it going to take? And that's why it's just the whole, uh, you know, we've had things in the last couple of years with Diploma Academy. We've had Interventionist, we've, uh, relooked at how we u- utilize our Flex Teachers and, and where, I think we have an effective model, and those things have been helping us, and we have some good data to support that. But we don't know what kind of strain this will put on the system once we start, you know, building from there. So that, again, that's why multi-year rollout, so it's part of the discussions.
Mr. Wynder.
Similar to Gina, I have a few questions. Um, and just for clarity about the high school diploma versus district, is that regarding?
Adult diploma program, it's a partnership we have with Second Start.
And so, for the CRTC, since they're two credits each, I'm just curious how this would like to impact the students in those programs, since I know their schedules are already a lot more limited because of that program.
Well, those, the kids who go in the CRTC program for two years are making, and Jonathan, you know this from being a student there, that they're making a decision, uh, about their, the direction that their life and career is going to take. They are invested in that. That's part of their identity. You see them walking around with their gear all the time on that. So, they, the, in, in, in a lot of ways, that's what we want kids to do ideally, is to think about, um, high school, you know, that's why we're doing the work on pathways, uh, starting out with health pathways, I think we're doing business next.
I guess I should, I should clarify on my question. So, for access to different math courses and different, like, social study credit courses, will we be sure to provide a wide array of sections so they can access those and they won't be flung?
Yeah, and that, and that's why, that's why there's the two-step. I think that there is the possibility that we will require additional math and science especially. Um, not necessarily more than one point O FTE, because when you look at current class sizes and current enrollment of classes, we have room. We have room in our classes now. Not a ton, but I mean, we have room. But, so I think that's a potential when you look at going from the twenty-two and a half to twenty-four. Uh, because we will want to make sure that there's accessibility. In theory, to Gina's point. In theory, to Gina's point, we want to see our Concord High School CRTC enrollment go higher as a result of this, for some of that twenty percent who haven't found a pathway yet and recognize they can earn two credits a year in CRTC and create a pathway for themselves and then have additional credits that they don't currently have. That's, that's part of the vision, is we engage those students in something that they currently might not see the benefit in, and then that becomes an opportunity. But to your point, we need to make sure that there's accessibility to other level math classes in other parts of the day so that they can be duly enrolled in those.
And on a similar note of like vocational grades and like extended learning opportunities, I know one of the question and responses we're discussing, like extended learning, and I was thinking about the student who wants to study architecture, could they go work at an architecture firm and could that satisfy some of these math requirements, for example? And then could that be a lot more of an accessibility wise?
Yeah, that, go ahead.
If we had a, so, and, and we're getting into the weeds now, but if, if we had a math teacher overseeing that ELO and their credential, you know, looking at with the students learning, et cetera, and their credentials attached to that, it, it would be almost like a, a class of its own. Yeah, we could begin going down that road. We're, we're in the early stages of looking at what ELOs could be and how do you expand it? We know having an ELO coordinator, ELO coordinator is huge. She's done a phenomenal job with creating all these partnerships. But at the same time, when we start diving into, will this count for that, will this count for this, she has a credential in education, but it's only one, you know, area. So we have to begin to start thinking about if we were to expand on ELO, make it a requirement, does it become a course, so to speak, on a, on a teacher's, you know, schedule and are they overseeing it? Doing something like that does bring a capacity for us to be able to offer those things, but we're, we're still, we're not quite there yet.
But that, that type of flexibility, Jonathan, is something we definitely want to try to attain.
Because I, I could see how this could really be complementary with that, like accessibility and flexibility. I guess my, my last question was about, I know AP classes used to be limited to a certain, like, grade range, at least when I was there. I don't know if it's changed. Is there going to be more?
It's really not anymore, Jonathan.
Okay, it's not, okay.
No, I mean, we, we really, if a student elects to take, we have eighth graders taking, I don't know if I should say this publicly, but we have eighth graders who elect to take AP Calculus and we ship them up to the high schools. So if there's a ninth grader who's interested in AP Physics One, they're permitted to take AP Physics One at this point, totally flexible, totally open.
Yep.
Yeah.
And, and the belief that underlies that, Jonathan, is that the rigor of the educational experience has, is the value in itself. You know, even if the student might be able to get a higher grade in another course, if they want that challenge to, to expand their minds and expand their capacity to do that level of work, then we're certainly not going to stand in their way.
Thank you.
Ms. Walsh.
Is your intention to make the additional social, uh, social studies requirement a civics requirement in particular, or just because you mentioned the new state civics exam?
Right, well, our proposal is to raise the credit requirements from two-point-five to three in social studies. You know, one thing that that will allow us to do is to have more time with kids, to prepare them for that, for that state mandated test. One of two things, one of two unfunded mandates the state is requiring of us, the other one being personal finance.
I'm sure you could come with more if you thought about it, but two this year.
Forget the editorial comment.
And, and I'm not sure if we're being asked to vote on this this evening, or?
Well, what, what, what is in the report from the instructional committee is a recommendation. So when, when Brenda does her report, it's in there for you to vote on. We did not put her minutes in the, in the consent agenda because they have a recommendation.
I'm not sure, well.
I couldn't find the minutes.
No, that one wasn't in there.
The minutes aren't in here for this.
I don't, there are two motions with the instructional committee, that was not one of them. But it could be.
I thought you put it in here.
I do not see it. I see committee motion one and two.
No, I think instruction.
Yeah, I'm not far enough in.
It's page.
Fifty-seven, fifty-eight.
Yeah, the white farm on the calendar. I thought from your meeting before though, that you had recommended it.
I don't think we did. I think we talked about it, but I don't think we recommended it. That's why I was looking in the November.
So.
But we could certainly add it. I'm, I'm fine, I can, I'm fine to make a motion.
However, it's not from the instructional committee because we don't have a motion from the instructional committee. That would be just your personal motion.
So my, my, my suggestion is, is that you have another instructional committee meeting this month, right? In December, that we, you go back and review it.
Yep.
And then bring it back. We've done that before. We've, we've done that with policies that we thought we were going to bring forward and we pulled back, so, until we were sure that all the questions were answered. So my, I, I thought that was in the minutes. Let's hold back and go back to.
I think we didn't have enough members in the, the previous meeting, which is why we were not able to make a motion.
Okay.
So to answer Ms. Walsh's question, we will not be voting on that tonight because the instructional committee will review it and make a recommendation, which will be brought to the board in January, I assume.
Full board.
Full board. Go ahead.
The hypothetical motion in January, will it be on just the number of credits or the specifics of how the credits, the math credit?
I envisioned it being just the number of credits in the breakdown of the years, but that's something we can talk about.
I would envision that as well, because that would give us the opportunity next year to come back with some more data too, to think about whether the two years is sufficient or not. That would feel important to have, you know, the ability to do that.
Yeah, but, but one, true, but I think it's important that we are in agreement that at least one of those credits, if we go forward with this in the first step, that one of those credits has to be raising math from three to four credits. That's a must.
So it sounds like there's some things for the instructional committee to discuss during their meeting and work out.
And reluctance is the ELO requirement, not because I don't support that type of experience, I, I do. My concern would be sort of approving it without a plan for how we do it. It seems very, not quite ready for prime time yet.
We're in agreement, that's why it's in the second step.
Okay, so maybe there is a date certain that you come back with a plan to the instructional committee and the board when we, when we relook this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Walsh. Other questions?
All right, thank you very much. We look forward to hearing from you more in the future.
Superintendent, I'm assuming that is. Report?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, so in that case, we will move on to item number eight, which is a charter amendment review that I will handle here. We, I received the communication from Clerk of the District Patrick Taylor with regards to the charter amendment questions that were posed to the electorate in the November eighth election. Questions one, two, four, and five were approved by the appropriate requisite number of votes for the, in the Concord election. What that translates to is question one was actually an amendment to eliminate obsolete references. That one was passed. Question two was the amendment to clarify residency and domicile requirements for the. Process fulfilling vacancies and also changing voting districts to voting zones. Question, that was approved. Question four was a amendment to update the revision process, that also was passed. Question five was a amendment to clarify and add a ability for the treasurer and clerk of the school district to be selected in an alternate method of how, and it is, be within the accordance of state law at the time. The one question that was not approved was question number three, which would have allowed the board to set its own compensation, and that did not pass. So all of these will go into effect as part of the charter on midnight, January the first. And the only other thing I will say with regards to that is, one of the items, as you know, question number two, which clarifies the residency domicile requirements, has an impact with regards to one of the members of this board. And we have been advised by the Secretary of State's office that per the revision of the charter, which was approved, that the one member will be required to vacate the position effective January first, if not a resident of the zone that they are in. This has, as I'm sure many of you are aware, this has already been reported in media. And I have asked for the written statement from the Secretary of State's office to make sure we are absolutely clear on that. But based on the information and the positions that have been sent to me, it looks like that if the member is not, does not resign before the January first directive, that we will need to declare the seat vacated and fill it pursuant to school board policy number one fifty. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, I'll move then to the next item, which was, one of the things that the Charter Commission had tried to do was to require that candidates for school board file financial statements similar to other elected offices in the state. The Charter Commission was not able to do that, they did not have the power to do that, and had requested that, that we follow on with this based on state representatives changing that requirement. And I just wanted to let you know that Representative Connie Lane of Concord, Merrimack District sixteen, has, and has, who has served on Election Law Committee, has agreed to introduce a bill that would recreate, that would recreate this requirement. Representative Lane has, as many know, always been an advocate for our public schools, and we appreciate her help in this. That bill is expected to be filed in January, I believe, at the next filing date, but it has not been filed yet. That is the update that I have right now. Mr. Weinberg is dying to ask a question.
Do you know if it is Concord-specific, the LSR?
I, I do not know for certain the wording in this. My impression, and don't, this is not fault, that it would be beyond Concord, not just Concord-specific, but that it would be a broader bill. But since nothing has been filed yet, I really can't say what it will, will say. However, you know, the delegation to the state from Concord has heard the request of the Charter Commission, and they are looking into it and, and plan on doing something about that and taking action on that in the coming year, if they can. So that's it, that's all I have. And we will have to sit back and wait and see what comes up and whether it goes through the State House or not. But I just wanted to update everyone because I know you all had expressed interest and were aware of this as well. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Cotton.
There was also some discussion during the Charter Commission hearing. That does not happen, whether the school board would consider making a rule of its own to, to attempt to, at least voluntarily, make disclosures.
That's an excellent question. I know that Ms. Cannon has looked into it extensively, so I'll allow her. And she had, in her role as the Chair of the Communication and Policy Committee, so I'll let her answer that one.
So, yes, that, that was something that was, that was sort of on the books to look at as we rolled into the new year. But the issue that we're going to have with that is that what the board can do is, the board can approve what's called a resolution, which is binding only on the current board members. That obviously leaves a very large loophole for the people who are not yet on. Comply, because the board does not have the authority to dictate to non-board members.
I recognize that large loophole that you're referencing, and I would hope that people who are considering to run for the board would, would consider voluntarily disclosing the same things that the board had agreed to disclose for themselves. Just a thought for the future.
May I ask a question? So if the board can require its members to, to provide that information, can the board require that those who are elected and become members provide that information from their, from the election that had just occurred?
Just a question.
Yeah, well, in other words, that if I, let me tell you that I recently ran for the board and I'm elected, and I will serve that term starting in January, can I be, can the board require me at that time, as a member, to show or reveal my financial contributions at that point? I'm asking the question, I don't know.
Well, I, I'm not sure I know the answer. I, I'm happy to opine anyway. Which is, I, I don't know that the board has the authority to retroactively require disclosure, because I think the authority of the board to act on board members happens when the new board members are sworn in, that they then have to comply. But to, I just, I mean, it's possible that, that, that you can say, okay, in January, you've got to produce documents from your campaign, but I think that's, I think you're going to have an uphill battle with that.
I thought I'd just ask the question, since as you were talking about it.
I would agree with what Gina has said from a legal perspective. Again, I think it's, it's more of a moral suasion argument, I think, that we would attempt to ask people to, to consider.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Cotton, for your expertise, and thank you for all of your hard work on that, Ms. Cannon. Other questions with regards to this? If not, then I'd like to move on to item ten, which is a proposed resolution to support additional school building aid. Mr. Weinberg.
So as we all know, the building aid rankings were released a few weeks ago. I think we are all kind of aware of the limitations that might arise with the building costs and capital funding costs, and also just like the scope of the climate with taxpayers bearing the brunt of a lot of the costs of these projects. So I just wanted to also provide more latitude to the administration to help advocate for this by having the school board have a direct stance on it. So you'll see that there is a type on here, an "and," I will not be reading an "and," so we can just look at that one. But the resolution, or I would say, I'll make a motion to accept the resolution, whereas the Concord School Board recognizes the importance of the New Hampshire Building Aid Program for School Districts, whereas the Concord School District understands that the cost of capital building projects falls heavily on local property taxpayers. We, the Concord School Board, support the expansion of the building aid program and urge our state legislators, executive counselors, and the governor's office to appropriate additional funding for the state building aid program.
Okay, the motion has been made by Mr. Weinberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cotton. Is there further discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
I have a couple of friendly amendments.
Oh, I love those.
May? The executive council doesn't have any power to appropriate funds, they have no role in the state budget process, so I would delete them. And I would say the governor, as opposed to the governor's office, since we're referring to the legislators.
Great. Would that, oh, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I was going to ask the, the person who made the motion, as well as those, the person who seconded, if they would accept those friendly amendments and modify their.
Yeah, I, I think Cam would know. Yeah, I, I think Pam would know.
I, I support the amendment.
Question, so does that include in surplus?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Walsh? Anyone else? Go ahead, Ms. Cannon.
Sorry, we're going to strike the executive counselors and...
The office.
Change it to the governor.
And the governor.
Legislature.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm just trying to keep...
Yeah.
Nope, very good. Thank you, Ms. Cannon, for keeping track of that.
So just strike apostrophe S, office.
Yes.
Correct. Other, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Just more background information as well that I want to provide. So, I did some research into how much of the $430 million revenue is existing. Of that, about 131 million is still there. So, approximately 300 million has been expended, but there are revenues from previous years that are also existing, which I received from the New Hampshire Fiscal Policy Institute, which equates to about 250 million, which is existing in revenues from other years.
You mean like the rainy day fund, or, and just...
Additional revenues, or what? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
I just wanted to, that I know that at least one Concord rep is working on a bill on this situation, and I think others may as well.
Today that we did some, Matt did some research and met with, called Amy Clark over at the Department of Ed, and there are five LSRs relative to building aid. So, there's a lot of action over there. So, this, this resolution will help us to move some of that activity forward.
Other questions or comments? Not seeing any. The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Weinberg. At this point, we are at item number 11. This is public comment on any agenda items, agenda items only. We ask you to please make any comment in accordance with our public comment policy, the number of which escapes me right now, I believe 136.
136.
Is there anyone who wishes to make a public comment at this time? Not seeing any. I will let, certainly will make everyone aware that we have another public comment session at the end, later in our meeting, not totally at the end, but later in our meeting, which is a public comment on any subject whatsoever, and you may make a comment then. With that, we will move on to item 12, personnel. We, item number A, leave of absence requests, we do not have any this evening. So, moving on to item B, CA nominations.
Can I do this one? So, I'd like to, I'm happy this evening to place the name of Dr. Timothy Herbert for the position of the Concord High School Principal. I think that, that Tim has demonstrated to us, to the people that he interviewed with, to the folks that filled out the survey, gave us feedback, and, and that also includes the faculty, that he is the right candidate for this position. And I think you're hearing a lot of ideas, activities, initiatives, as they move forward with the high school and the programs and the support that we have for students. And I can think of no one better than to have Dr. Herbert fill those shoes. So, it's with great pleasure that I nominate him for the position of Concord High School Principal.
So moved.
Okay. So I was just, that's fine. So we have a motion to accept that. I was going to jump in and add a little bit more information, but I'll do that during the discussion period. So the motion has been made to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to hire Mr. Timothy Herbert for the Concord High School Principal. By Mr. Weinberg, is there a second?
I'd like to second it.
Seconded by Ms. Cannon. Discussion, I just want to clarify for people who are at home that, one, this is in the board packet on page 54, and that we are hiring Mr. Timothy, or Dr. Timothy Herbert, as a Concord High School Principal at a salary of $157,620. That's step three, M plus 30, and CAGS, I guess I say, can say CAGS, I don't know if it's C-A-G-S. I'm not sure the acronym.
CAGS.
But CAGS is what I think it is, so. Is there any other discussion? Not seeing any? I will ask for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Are there any members that abstained?
Abstained.
Please record that the vote was...
Yep, I got it.
Okay. I was going to say 6, 4, 0 against, and abstained. All right. Congratulations, Dr. Herbert. You are going to be the next principal of Concord High School. We wish you very, very much luck.
And we look forward to seeing a lot of you.
We look forward, yes, I was going to say, feel free to come to the school board for help at any time. So, very good. Are there, I'm assuming there are no other CAA nominations? Correct. So we move on to coaching nominations for Wintersport.
Correct. So we have four new coaches coming forward for Runlet Middle School, winter coach nominations. And we have Anthony Blinn for Girls A Basketball Coach, Emily Farone for Girls B Basketball Coach, John Sargent for Assistant Wrestling, and Thomas Sargent for Assistant Wrestling Coach.
Okay. Does anyone care to make a motion to accept those recommendations?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Weinberg. Is there a second? I will second it.
Okay.
Whoever, I'd like whoever. All right. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
I just, what is a supplemental assistant coach?
Because there's, there's a second assistant coach. It's two assistant coaches, there's an additional assistant coach.
So I guess I'll...
So is it not budgeted?
No, there's, there's, it's in the budget.
So there are existing two, I mean, previously there were two assistant coaches?
There's funding in the budget for this position.
That doesn't quite answer the question, though, which is, was there previously two assistant coaches?
Coaches in...
And was...
If you look, it says who, who they're both replacing.
Okay. I, I guess we're just, it seems odd that it's not supplemental, that it's not just assistant coach and assistant coach, as opposed to assistant coach and supplemental assistant coach. I guess we're a little struggling with a little bit of the wording on that one. All right? Any other questions? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? They are approved. That, I believe, concludes personnel.
Yes, it does.
Karen? Okay. So, we will move on to the report of the Instructional Committee, item number 14, Committee Meeting Report. Ms. Hastings.
The number 13.
Oh, you're right, there is no 13.
Wow.
We are not, we are not, yeah, we did not include 13 because it's an unlucky number. We will move on to the next item, which is 14, because we obviously need more of those math teachers to help us out a little. Go ahead, Ms. Hastings.
Checking on you, see if you picked up on it.
Mr. Cotton got it right off.
We met on November 14th, I'm looking for the date there, and had a fascinating presentation on the white, advanced program at White Farm Alternative Program. I hope I'm saying that correctly. It's a long title, and the information was provided to you in the board book for consideration. But what we're looking to do here is bring this program, that's been offered by the school district for many years, to the DOE for an approval process, to make it an official alternative education program through the school district. And in order to do that, the board has to recognize this program to be able to then bring it to the, to the DOE. So the Instructional Committee recommended to the, that the full board approve this program as an official CSD alternative program, and the vote was three to nothing on that. Tiffany?
Is it just the motion now, or?
So, I guess, on the recommendation of the Instructional Committee, I moved that the board vote to approve the Advanced Program at White Farm Alternative Program as an official alternative educational program for the purposes of the approval, of approval from the Department of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Hastings. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Not seeing any? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead. Look forward to your expertise, Mr. Fabrizio.
I've been awful quiet, Kathleen said. No, thank you. I, I think that sometimes when you, part of the work that we've been doing, and part of that was to go through program approval for all of our programs that we had, and make those current throughout the district. So I've been working on this with the assistant principals and directors for about the last year. And in doing so, when we went to rework the, the program that we brought forward, Matt and I and the access program, and a couple of the programs at the high school, we were talking about our advanced program in White Farm with the DOE. And they said, well, that's interesting, they said, because we don't have an approval currently for that program. And I said, oh, my goodness. So, we did some work, and we made sure that we were following all the right standards. We, I worked with Michelle Speckman and Lauren Arland, who are both the high school, Lauren's the counselor for the program, and Michelle is our director. And as you see, what we presented today is all of the detail that the DOE asked for us to make sure we had in place, which was a good exercise because we made sure we were doing the right thing for our students in that advanced program in White Farm for our kids, and we are. And then Matt was very helpful, had our fire inspection and our health inspection done, so we knew that there was a safe environment for our children to be in also every day.
So I have two questions for you, Mr. Fabrizio. One is, if we do not seek this approval by the DOE, will the, will we be at risk of losing this program for the 20 students?
Yes.
Okay. And how much additional money will this cost if we get this? Does this approval require any additional funding from this board?
Currently, no. We've been running the program, we have staffed the program. Some of the, some of the things we did last year in the budget, remember, we put a full-time transition coordinator in place, and we've done some work with our freshmen, that you know, we've added some support. That's what we are utilizing for this program. And currently, there'll be no more additional cost on this program.
Thank you. Anybody else have any additional questions?
Yeah, John, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Parker.
This is a school psychologist intern. Can you explain that to me?
Sure. We have an intern with us right now from Full State College, who works, works alongside our, our group of school psychologists we have in the district. And she goes over, and she's got an experience herself in coaching and some outward bound work, and is very interested in this field. So she's doing group counseling with those students, and also by the, the environment, she's able to take kids and, and, you know, go for, have them outside, do some outside activities, do some trust-building things with them, and starting to build their own self-esteem. So it's an opportunity to do that.
So she's being supervised by...
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions? All right. The motion having been made and seconded, we will now vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Very good. The motion passes.
Who seconded that?
What do you need, Kathleen? Who seconded?
Pam.
Pam. Ms. Walsh seconded that one.
We continued by adding a fifth item to our agenda that Superintendent Murphy had brought to us, which asked the committee to review two proposed school calendars for the 23-24 school year. And then we were requested to recommend one to the full board for adoption, which we have done. So I'll make a motion with that one as well.
Okay. So the motion is... 24 calendar, that is, I believe on page 62?
Yes, that is version one of the two that we were presenting.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Go ahead.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Weinberg. Discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Weinberg.
Could we just clarify for the rest of the board members what the differences, I guess, between the two were?
Sure. What we were trying to accomplish was the opening of the, of the school year, in that we got some feedback in, in years past, that the beginning of the school year was very difficult to, because you had two days of professional development, youngsters only came in for two days, and then the following Friday, they were out. And it was really a very staggered start. And in addition, at the high school, it's only one day, because we bring freshmen in on, and if you're looking at the 23-24 calendar, you would bring freshmen in on the 30th, and then, and then the rest of the class would come in on the 31st, which gives them one day of being in school. So, I looked at the calendar, and what I did was, I moved back the instructional, the professional development days. Those are the days that are in parentheses, the 28 and 29. So the one I proposed to the unions was that we would have those workshop days the week before. That would allow us to have a more consistent delivery of instruction that first week. However, I was not successful in convincing them of that calendar, and I'd be very well aware here, their union contract says that technically, they start after Labor Day. So they said, well, we'll, we'll have that consistency of time, but we would start after Labor Day. And this, every time you do one thing, it's cause and effect, right? So then we started looking at what would happen at the end of the year, and pushing out those days for snow days and everything else, it didn't seem like the...
It would put us in the last week of June.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm really careful of that. It's hard enough in the late June days with the weather. We were beyond the high school graduation, and that I knew was going to be problematic, as Jim mentioned earlier on tonight. So, unfortunately, I have not been able to make a difference. This does represent 183 days. Next year, we'll have, we will add one more day to the teacher's contract, which will bring us another day of instruction, but, so I, I was not able to make, they did any progress. They did agree to this calendar, and it's very much like this year's calendar, with the exception of New Year's Day.
So, just to clarify, the alternative calendar, well, if they would start on the day after Labor Day, that would have pushed the last day of school to the 20th?
Well, depending on how many days you had.
True. But, but all things, if they had, all things keeping equal with regards to snow days, that would have pushed the June 18th by an additional two days to the 20th.
And that's built in the five days. Remember that now, those five days are built in.
And the fourth and fifth of, of September would have been professional development days.
Well, it couldn't have been the fourth because that's Labor Day, so...
So school wouldn't have started until the seventh.
So it would have been the seventh, so it would have been an additional, so it would have been the 22nd.
Right.
The, moved it to the 22nd.
And that's Saturday, so it's under the 24th.
24th, so...
One, one other thing that I'd like to bring to your attention is, one of the things that I did change up on this calendar, is that I put the workshop day for teachers on the 13th of February, and took it from the March. Normally, we would have it in March. If you looked at this year's calendar, you would notice that it was in March. The reason for that is that, that would be a, that is the presidential primary.
Projected?
Projected. I know, I don't want to get into it, but I've got to have something to anticipate what's going to happen.
Can that be flexible?
Yeah, that's the question.
It's going to have to be, because I actually guessed at when the primary would be. I, I stuck with a Tuesday, but it could be the 20th.
I'm going to guess the 30th, but that's just my prediction. Yeah.
Could be.
It has been.
Well, I want some flexibility. All I'm saying to you is, I will not add another day to the students.
So, the 13th could have whatever time it is.
I will move that day, but I'll, and I will come back to you on that if you allow me to do that.
Yes. This is a holder.
Right. It was holding a spot so that we didn't have school, and I had teachers still working doing their professional development day, and still accomplish what we wanted to.
Okay. Other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
And I appreciate you trying to get this information in there, and I, and I noticed that instead of doing a tentative first day of school, last day of school, you have moved it to the last potential day. And both with the primary and this, like, families use this to plan, they need to, you start booking your summer camps next month, for the next summer, you know? So, to the extent that we could put on this calendar, both that the 13th is subject to change based on the date of the presidential primary.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And if we could also write on the calendar, like, the earliest possible last day of school, so people know that your kids could be home starting on the 12th, or go to the 18th. I think that would be helpful information for people to have.
Okay.
And hopefully, and some phone, avoid some phone call, the phone calls you get at the end of the year with, "Wait, the calendar's set."
No, and again, I, I will reiterate that I've always been adamant about giving youngsters every minute of it instructional time that they can, and, and actually, you know, making up, making up days at the end of the year, and having teachers back for professional development at the very end of the year, honestly, has been, it's challenging. I mean, they are, they are done, and, you know, I think that it's, it's a hard time of the year.
So, are we looking at changing the wording on the June 18th where the descriptions are at the bottom? Last day of school for students would be between the 12th and the 18th?
Or you could keep, yeah, something like that.
Yeah. Keep the 18th as the last day to plan on.
Yeah.
Because that's the expected last day of school?
School.
But we may be able to...
But 12th is the earliest possible last day of school or something.
Right.
Ms. Cannon.
I'm just going to suggest you come up with a different color, so that tentative days are a different color, and people who are looking at the calendar can go, "Oh, orange or purple, it's a tentative day." So, that they have...
You mean the last day on the 18th?
Well, the 13th, and then the 12th through 18th, I'm just going to suggest that we...
Yeah.
The 12th, hold on, go back, 12, 18.
February 13th.
Yeah. Those are the snow days, yeah.
And then June 12th. People can look and go, "Oh, those may change."
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Go ahead, Mr. Weinberg.
I just, one last, is I know we had a conversation tonight about some outreach to the superintendent about calendar changes in this upcoming January. Should we be considering for the subsequent year anything with regard to that?
Are you talking about the January 1st?
It's a holiday.
It's a holiday.
It's a holiday.
Yeah. I got off the hook on that one.
It's a Sunday this year.
It's, it's the...
Happening every seven years.
Next, next year is Monday. Okay? Good? Nope. Good question. I'm glad we asked it rather than just made the assumption, so... Any other questions or comments? All right. Not seeing any. I will ask all those in favor of the motion to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hastings. With that, and I'm not even going to pretend to go by the numbers anymore, with that, we will go to, I believe, the subcommittee reports, unless someone, unless I, someone recognizes that I am omitting something?
No, you're right on target here. I don't have a report on the equity subcommittees, only that we have another meeting tomorrow. Did you see that? We have a Zoom meeting, so I will have a more report on the next, at our next board meeting. Sustainability Committee, I put these on here because they're kind of standing ad hoc. John, I...
So, so we have a meeting this upcoming Thursday, I guess, as an update. One of the representatives from our committee went to Egypt for COP27 and was part of some of the discussions. So, Rob Warner, he's going to bring back some of his wisdom and kind of experiences. He conquered as part of this coalition called ICLI, which is like local governments for sustainability, and kind of we work as like a cohort coalition to kind of see how local communities can work together. So, he went with that organization, and he's going to kind of bring back some ideas we'll discuss, which I'll make sure to bring to the January meeting.
And that's on 12/8, Thursday?
Yes.
Okay.
At the city council chambers, if anyone would like to join.
Thank you, Mr. Weinberg. So, with that, we move on to other business. Enrollment, I believe you'll be taking that one, Superintendent?
Right. I mean, it, your reports are in there from, you know, looking at last June to the current enrollment. You know, we always do that the first of the month, and you can see that the elementary, we've seen a slight uptick in the numbers. Runlet from last, you know, that's the biggest decline we've seen at, at the middle school level, from 858 down to 818, so we've lost 40 students there. The high school pretty much maintains itself, is about a, you know, 12 youngsters off on that. But again, those numbers go up and down a little bit, so I think it's, it's staying fairly flat. We haven't seen huge changes. We are looking, though, as we've already started looking at our enrollment, looking at class sizes, as we begin to prepare for the budget, so this information is really important. Everything looks pretty good. I know we had concerns about, over at Diver Meadow in our fifth grade, but we have two fifth grades of 23, so, you know, we had some attrition there and lost a student or two there. But everything else looks really good.
Go ahead.
We've seen a significant uptick, again, in our preschool population. John has, John has just, you know, John keeps me posted on that, you know, and that's for youngsters who turn three and are eligible for services, so we're seeing a, I don't know what your latest numbers are, John.
No, we've taken in over 10 kids this, this month that are newly identified, and we are assessing, we're up to almost 75 assessments already this year, and last year about 120 in the full year. We're looking at 75 right now, and we're just in December, so it's stayed where we are of being in the, in the, in the city and in the world right now around kids in need. So, we're seeing, it's probably not a bad thing when you think about it, we're doing that many referrals because it says that the community's reaching out to us. It means our people who are doing home visits and out in the community, people like Lori Hart, who are running Family Center, it's working. We're tapping and seeing a lot of families and connected with a lot of them. It's just the, the influx of what that means in the system, and, and the, the busyness of our evaluators right now is, is pretty significant, and we'll be talking about that as we get into budget enrollments about preschool, because it's really expanding right now.
Thank you. Ms. Hastings and then Ms. Walsh.
Who is in, who does the testing on these preschool? Is that the elementary school that called, do those staff?
It's the preschool staff.
So, they have their own people to do that?
It, it is the educators themselves, and the OTs, and the speech people in the preschool assigned to the preschool.
And do they have enough people to be doing all of that?
Enough is a, is a question of trying to scale. Are they, like I said, I speak to them weekly, they feel supported. We have other officials in the district that I have to rely on them. They haven't needed to tap that yet, but I meet with, I meet with, you know, Sue Kerriger bi-weekly. We have a standing meeting, we go over where we are with things like that. It seems to be sustaining. It's more about, we're pushing the number we can bring in. If this continues and our trend continues through the year, we're going to have to do some adjustments and do that. And then we offer next year, we may have to look at our days of offering to, to meet the needs of all these kids.
I guess, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't sacrificing services for testing.
Currently, we're not.
Okay. And then back to the runlet enrollment.
Again, if I could just expand, one of our hardest things, as you all know where we are with, with assistance and with our educational assistance, and they work immensely hard, and we're, we're still hiring a lot. We still have openings for education assistance, and that's some of the strain we're facing is having that as fast as they come in. We have them posted, we're advertising, we hire.
Great. With regards to the RMS decline in enrollment, do we know whether that's due to moving or, or going to private schools? Or we don't know?
All of the above. I could tell you that we've had some go to charter school, we've had some sign up for V-Lax, we've had youngsters that are homeschooled and gone to private schools. So, it's a, it's a, it's a plethora of reasons why our students have left the middle school.
Our parents surveyed or reached out to to find out why they're leaving the public schools?
My, I, our office does not do that, if you're asking me. I don't do that.
Well, I get it with the middle school.
I don't know if the middle school does that. I suspect in some cases, they, they don't know until we report it.
Okay.
Isn't that an issue of confidentiality as well, Kathleen?
For, regards to...
If someone were to leave the district, they're not required to tell us.
No, I just know what we ask.
They're not required to tell us.
But we can ask.
We, we know sometime...
If it's confidential, I wouldn't want to be asked.
Why? If you had a...
It's nobody's business but mine. It's not, you know, it's my kid. I want to send him to a charter school. I don't have to ask permission.
We, we will know that, Dave, without asking them because we get...
I'm not trying to be difficult.
Yeah, we get requests.
Hold on, one person at a time, please. Ms., go ahead, Mr. Parker.
I was just saying, to me, I, I may be wrong. I was questioning whether it was an issue of confidentiality. John, do you...
I would think it is. I mean, especially the kid at New, we wouldn't ask, you know, part of, especially if, if parents making a choice on that, there is their choice to go there, so we don't really, we don't have the right to, to question more about what their choice of school is right now. It's very, very touchy right now. We have a lot of families that have chosen to, to homeschool, or go to charter school, or V-Lax. Again, I'll go back to where we are in preschool, wherever else. We are, we are placed right now, we have a lot of students with a lot of mental health needs, and we do sometimes, and I think that some of that, some parents do make choices for the anxiety of where kids are, and we're seeing some of that in society right now where we are.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frabrizio. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Just, I want to...
Ms. Hastings, have, have you finished your question?
I just think it would be helpful for us to know if things were bothersome enough for a family to make that decision that we could work on. And how do we know if we don't ask? Is, is all I'm saying.
Okay. Superintendent, did you have...
Just be aware that our, so, please note that we've seen an increase in that.
Ms. Walsh, thanks for your patience. Mr. Parker, if you have a question, you can go next, but go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
Millbrook, from 308 in November to 352 in December, that seems like a huge influx of students.
Preschool referral?
No, preschool members are down.
No, they're just...
Not on, according to this.
Oh, just because I think one of them wasn't reporting.
Yeah, 308 in November to 352 in December.
I'll have to look at that. Let me do, let me go look at that and double check it. Thank you.
Yeah, that number is, certainly begs some questions. Any other questions with regards to the enrollment? Superintendent, do you want to say anything with regards to the NESDEC enrollment projections?
No, I think that's a valuable piece of information. We, I wanted to bring that to you for you to review and study, and as you can see that from there and the perspective that they're providing to us, although we saw an uptick in '21, '22, that was a lot of students coming back, we saw a slight decrease in terms of their review for this year. It, it wasn't too bad, about 20 students, but they do predict that we will continue. If you look at the long-range forecast on page 70 of the report, 70 of your report, you'll see the long-range forecast shows declines all the way up through 2032, '33. So, we are anticipating that. Ten-year study, which we will revive for you for budget purposes, as well as the, the enrollment report, which we have just finished for this year, so you'll be using that in your budget during budget season, so... I think it's just good information.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Cannon.
Superintendent, did NESDEC take into account the significant number of housing units that are coming online?
Well, we, we report that to them.
Okay.
And we also, they also use births to conquered mothers, so they try to assess the area hospitals, so that's what they use. You can see in kindergarten, like, next year's play stays pretty, pretty flat, although they're anticipating 260, so it's up a little bit. But again, it's, you know, Jack did that, too. Remember when we were questioned by folks around the middle school project? So, we contacted all of those new housing, Jack did, and, and gathered some information. We didn't see a huge amount of youngsters coming out of those projects.
Go ahead, Mr. Cannon.
Just, it is striking, speaking of the middle school, that they're projecting losing 157 students over the next 10 years, going from 837 down to 680. So, I just want us to try to keep that in perspective when we're looking at the size of the middle school going forward.
So, we'll have some of this data for you when you, when you're trying to make those decisions, because, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about two middle schools, right? And it's because of the numbers, the population of 850 right now, or it isn't 850 now, it's down to 800. So, that, that kind of information will help secure your decision to move forward with a single middle school.
Other questions? Thank you very much, and, you know...
Ms. Hastings discovered that we had, apparently had a 61-student kindergarten classroom at Millbrook.
I think it's just a transpos...
We think it was probably supposed to be 16, so...
I was going to say, that is a very large, that would be a very large...
Large kindergarten.
Kindergarten. Thank you. Thank you for that, for clearing that up.
We missed it.
Okay. So, is it transposition type? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Proposed calendar meetings?
Sure. Let's look at December, and you have a meeting on, on Wednesday night, Capitol Facilities. I know that Matt has discussed the agenda with Ms. Higgins, so we're good to go with that. Next week, we have executive committee and instructional committee, so that's where we'll bring back those credit next week. Now, we have a tentative date for the 14th for your board gathering your time that you spent together. The CRT students in the culinary arts program would like to be able to provide you with dinner for you, so... And then the following week, we have a policy committee. We have some work to do as we revisit the bully policy again, and I've just about got all the words memorized. And then we're on a break, the holiday break, and we return on Monday, January 2nd. So, I have, we have you scheduled for school board meeting that night, so we're moving forward with that. I think that works out for some of our folks' schedules.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, because it's, it says that it would be on the Tuesday if it's otherwise scheduled on a holiday out of the charter.
Right.
It should be the night.
No, it should be the third.
On the third. We're not doing that as a day off.
But it's, doesn't.
It's a federal holiday, I don't know.
Doesn't say about it being a school holiday versus a, I'm going to ask you, uh, what did we do in, have we done in other cases where a holiday that is not, the school does not have off, do we count that in the past?
President's Day is example, probably.
Yeah, President's Day is in the middle of the month, though.
But it's like a Monday.
Yeah.
Monday holiday.
Usually, so if we've had committee meetings, I feel like we had committee meetings last year.
I think we've had meetings.
Yeah, we've had.
Yeah, we have. We've not, uh, I've not rearranged those, because we judge the, the, this calendar by the students attendance. They're in school that day.
It, it makes no difference to me, obviously. I just was trying to comply with the charter.
Well.
Um, let me go back and look at that again.
Go back and look at that, but I think right now.
Read that one more time in the charter, but you've done it, um, you have done, you've held your meetings on federal holidays. Where we had school.
It just says it's a legal holiday. Let's just, let us ask our clerk and our attorney with regards to that. But at this point, I'd leave it. And then, uh, actually, the, the first meeting will be two meetings, first being an organizational meeting and the second being the regular monthly school board meeting on January.
Say that one more time.
Typically, they're listed as, uh, two meetings, a six P M. organizational meeting for, for the school district and then a six fifteen regular school board meeting. Um, I, it's all one meeting essentially, but I know that's the way it has been listed in the past, so, just to, for the public to know.
Okay, I'm just making a note about it. And then another, uh, Capitol Facilities on the fourth. Uh, the following week, um, the instructional committee changed to the tenth for, I believe that was a, a reason for the, the committee members to be able to attend. And we'll have negotiations committee on, on Wednesday, um.
I think it's supposed to be the first Monday after the, the second Monday of every month. That, because Tuesdays are, are tough for Jonathan and Sean.
Well, and, and to be honest, um, that is a new semester, so that really whatever works best for commu- committee members, I think that would be.
So you want me to go back to the ninth on that one?
I think that is okay.
Yeah, I, I, no, that's good. On the sixteenth is, there is no school that day. That is my, um, Martin Luther King, uh, holiday. Finance committee on the eighteen. I tentatively haven't even talked to you, anybody yet, about the board retreat, but you always do a board retreat in Ja- in January on Saturday. Um, we're working on an agenda now, so I tentatively put it for the twenty-first.
It seems a little. That's fine. I will actually defer to input from board members that are, I will not be here on the twenty-first.
Was there a better date? I mean, I picked this date, so it doesn't, I have, I don't own it.
Fourteenth?
I would support the fourteenth.
The fourteenth is fine. I didn't know if anybody had long weekend.
It is a long weekend and we didn't know if people would be traveling.
I am fine with the fourteenth, but I, what's anybody else's thoughts?
We could do the seventh as well.
I cannot do the seventh or eighth. Um, I can do the fourteenth if people want to do that, or the twenty-first. The twenty eighth?
I can, I can do the fourteenth too.
All right, I'll move that to the fourteenth.
I, if you're, I think we can be ready by the fourteenth for that, and I think that.
We're already working on the agenda and I haven't. We haven't got to that yet.
Um, is everybody good with the fourteenth? Okay, I'm just looking, because this will affect, uh, this will actually affect our new board.
Yes.
So I was just, just glancing to see if our new board, those members were good with that. Fourteenth, I think, is okay.
Yeah, maybe I'll include the, um, the calendars in with my weekly report. I did send, uh, my weekly report. I CC'd the two board members, so they could begin to get a sense of some of the activities that are happening during the week.
I think that would be, I think that would be, uh, useful for them.
Okay. All right. Um, and then the other thing is the executive committee, um, on the twenty-third. But I wanted to talk about the legislative breakfast that we normally do in January. Now, last year, we did it in March, because remember, we had a high number of COVID. We got really concerned about the, you know, what was happening. So we moved, pushed it off to March. So we should, one, we should probably have a meeting, but I, I mean, I don't know who committee chair is at this point, but.
No, but for now, I'll defer to the current.
I think that's a great idea. I, I would be curious on when, 'cause in the second period, file bills in January. Do you know the date of that?
The House is done.
But I, I thought there was a secondary date.
The Senate, yeah, the secondary date is ha- has happened, so they have a period before the election and a period after the election. The Senate deadline hasn't come yet, but it's.
Is that in January?
I don't know when the Senate deadline is off the top of my head, but.
If, if there is a deadline, that's, I guess, that, that, a different deadline, that would be get before. I think that would be good, if not, that would be.
If it's, it's early.
It would be early, I think. But, Mr. Weinberg, why don't you look into that and, uh, and make a recommendation for a breakfast date?
And I would suggest Fridays, because that's usually a day that they have less, I'll say they have less committee meetings on that day, on Friday. Monday and Fridays are the days that they, they meet more and the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So, uh, we did it on Friday last year. It seemed to work. We had a great turnout. Um, we'll also invite, you know, other folks. We invited city folks. We, we wanna make sure we invite our executive counselor. So we'll, we'll, we're starting to put that whole, but maybe you can come by the office and Bridget and I are working on it.
Yeah, we can find the time.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll pick a date. Other than that, that's the calendar for January. And so, right after that, in February, the good news is you set your budget. That gets a little busy. I think Jack sent out the schedule last, did you get the schedule out, Jack? For the dates?
So, and then at the January meeting, we will have the opportunity to add or adjust any of these meetings as well.
Yeah.
Questions? Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
If we're not gonna do it in early January, I might suggest for the legislative meeting, we do it after February fifteenth, which is the statutory deadline for the governor to submit his budget. So we might wanna do it a week or two after that, so we have an opportunity to react to the budget, maybe the first week after vacation.
I think that's a great recommendation.
Okay. So.
So which puts us back to March, but.
We moved it last year for reasons of, um, but I think additionally, you've held it in January. At least that was some of my history.
Well, and I think there was always opportunity to discuss multiple. I think more, communication's always better, so I think that would be a great topic in January.
So, I'm finished.
Okay. Um, then, let's see, with that, uh, we have our final public comments session, which is on any so- topic. Once again, in accordance with our policy, is there anyone who would like to make any public comment? All right, not seeing any, I'll close the public comment session. Um, with that, I will say at this time, just take a few minutes to mention that this is the, uh, last school board meeting for, um, Mr. Parker and Ms. Cannon. And I wanna thank them publicly for all of their efforts over the last three years, for their service and for the contribution to the Concord School District. Um, you both have done an outstanding job and it has been my honor to serve with you. And I think I speak for everybody when I say that, and, uh, we wanna wish you well and thank you very much in a public way. Now, uh, Superintendent, do we have any need for a non-public session this evening?
No, we don't.
We do not. Well, with that, I will entertain a motion.
Let me adjourn.
Uh, Mr. Parker makes the motion to adjourn. Is there a second, Ms. Cannon, seconds? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.